Evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And before we begin the roll, I would like to congratulate Mayor-elect Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Contreras for another term.
Thank you, Mayor.
And in the audience tonight, councilperson James Delaney in the audience, welcome, congratulations. And County Commissioner-elect Jody Brennan, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all of you. Let's move ahead then to item number one, call the roll.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here, thank you. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda, Mr. Reynolds, any correction changes?
No, sir. The only addition is that we have the momentum contract for the EDA that is on your desk.
Okay, so noted. Counselor Brennan?
Make a motion to approve the agenda of November fifteenth.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as noted with the innovation project for the EDA. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion passes, thank you very much. Item number four, the consent agenda, Mr. Reynolds, any changes, corrections?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Whiting. Discussion, otherwise, as part of the consent agenda, a motion and a second is made. Before we vote, we would read the consent agenda into the public record, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, these are the consent agenda items for fifteen October of two thousand twenty-two. Four A one approves the city council meeting minutes for one November of two thousand twenty-two. I'm sorry, it's fifteen November of two thousand twenty-two. Approves the city council meetings for one November two thousand twenty-two. Four B one adopts resolution number R two thousand twenty-two tac one-three-zero, amending the comprehensive plan musa and the twenty-four comprehensive plan. Four C one authorizes the execution of professional services services agreement with AE two S for eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars to perform SCADA programming, SCADA system improvements, and the Maris thirteen Hanson utility extension project. Four C T, four C two adopts ordinance number O two thousand twenty-two tac zero-two-six, amending city code chapter fifty-four point one-six, stormwater and urban runoff pollution control, and chapter fifty-four point four-nine, inspection of erosion control plan, and adopts resolution number R two thousand twenty-two tac one-three-six, adopting design criteria and stormwater pollution prevention. And four C three authorizes the execution of a professional services agreement with SRF for seventy-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy cents to perform design services for the Twelfth Avenue East driveway consolidation project, which is CIF twenty tac zero-one-four.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. The consent agenda has been read into the public record, there would be no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, a motion passes, the consent agenda has been passed, thank you. Now let's move ahead to item number five, now I'd like to call any resident citizen that would like to come and speak before the council on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda tonight. Mr. Reynolds, have we received any electronic communication?
No, sir.
Thank you. Seeing none, then we would move ahead to item six was business removal consent, there was none. And then I would move to seven A, which is a public hearing for our two thousand twenty-two full depth pavement reconstruction project, Counselor Lee. Counselor Contreras?
Make a motion to open our public hearing, please.
I have a motion to open the public hearing in a second, further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, that motion passes, the public hearing is now open, and Ryan will present.
Thank you, Mayor and council, this is the special assessment public hearing for the two thousand twenty-two full depth pavement reconstruction project. This was a Minnesota State statute four twenty-nine assessment project that we have given all public notices and followed state statute for the assessments on this project. We reconstructed Gorman Street right out here in front of City Hall from Fourth Avenue to Marshall Road. We also reconstructed Weston Court and Greenwood Court with this project. A little timeline for you, city council was provided a feasibility report back in January fourth of two thousand twenty-two. A public hearing was held for the project in January on the eighteenth. Plans were developed and bid out, and then a contract was awarded to Northwest Asphalt on March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And we got to work right away and finished this project early this year, it was completed around middle of July. And we're standing before you here tonight for the public hearing and adopting of assessments. Little before and after for you. Crumbled roadways, right, and brand spanking new pavement, pretty easy to sell these projects when they look like that. That's Weston Court, Greenwood Court, before and after. And the good stuff, so project costs for this. You can see the actual final costs were right around six hundred and fifty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. Of that approximately one hundred and seventy-two thousand of that money is being assessed. Four hundred and sixty thousand approximately of the is to the capital improvement fund. Six thousand five hundred and fifty, about eight dollars, is going to sanitary sewer, just shy of ten thousand dollars to the storm sewer fund, and a cost share with Shakopee Public Utilities for three thousand seventy-one dollars and seventy-five cents. This project does have special assessments, all the special assessments were determined per the City of Shakopee assessment policy. In general, thirty percent of the assessable street improvements are used to determine the total assessable street improvements. On this project, all of the adjacent lots were larger commercial or multifamily residential lots, and they'll all be, they're all proposed to be assessed on an area basis. There are two large city-owned lots on Gorman Street at four hundred and four eighty-five Gorman Street. They will not be assessed, but the portion, the prorated assessment that would have followed those lots is being paid for out of capital improvement fund and is not being paid, pushed on to anybody else for assessment purposes. And there was one corner lot on Fourth Avenue that was, a corner lot adjustment was made. They'll pay for the half of the improvements on Gorman Street and half when Fourth Avenue is reconstructed. The two-minute trail on Gorman Street was reconstructed with the project, and per the assessment policy, that is not assessable. And a new five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk on Greenwood Court and Weston Court was constructed, and that is proposed to be assessed at one hundred percent. Here's an assessment map to show you the two project areas. That project area on the left is Gorman Street, you can see the two large city lots. That split lot up at Fourth Avenue and Gorman Street, everybody else pretty standard. So, at the end of this project, when, when we presented the feasibility report, you can see the numbers there, Gorman Street, we were proposing about fifty-five hundred dollars per acre for the assessment. Final actual cost came in around three thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars per acre. And on Weston Court and Greenwood Court, the feasibility study had shown about a seven thousand thirty-eight per acre assessment, and the final actual cost came in at about five thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars ninety-six cents. We're proposing a ten-year payback period for the property owners, and the interest rate is proposed at four point seven five percent. There's a little amortization schedule. This shows a sample, one of the, one of each lots on Gorman and one on Weston and Greenwood Court. See the assessment amount there, the interest rates showing on that Gorman Street, if somebody paid off their six thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars over the ten-year period, they'd end up spending an extra sixteen hundred and eighty-seven dollars in interest. Similarly, over on that Greenwood Court, the assessment's a little more, that interest goes up. These are just examples, all of the assessments on this project vary based on the lot sizes. For the residents and the property owners, the payment options are that they can pay in full or a partial amount, a minimum of one hundred dollars, with absolutely no interest, if that payment's made by December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two to our finance department here at City Hall. And a notice with all the proper information will be mailed to all the residents. The assessments that aren't paid by December fifteenth will then be sent to the county and certified, and sent to the property taxes and paid over a period of ten years. It's subject to that interest rate of four point seven five percent from the date, tonight, that the assessments are adopted. And any property owner can choose to pay off any or all of their assessment amount at any time during that ten-year repayment period to avoid finance charges directly to the City of Shakopee Finance Department. And with that, I stand for questions, and I ask that you adopt a resolution R two thousand twenty-two one thirty-seven, a resolution adopting assessments for the two thousand twenty-two full depth pavement reconstruction project CIF twenty-two oh-oh-one. And I'd note that if there are any property owners in the audience tonight, that they, if they would like, would like to preserve their right to appeal their assessments, they must file a written objection prior to the close of the public hearing that we're holding right now. As of this moment, city staff has not received any objections or notices.
Ryan, thank you very much for your presentation, questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, if I could just make a, a point, the, per our policy, thirty percent is assessed and seventy percent is picked up by the general taxpayers in the capital fund.
Mayor and council, that is correct.
That's standard policy, and it's been that way for twenty years plus.
Other questions of staff? This project did come in under budget overall, and then there were, were there any unique circumstances to this project? I've toured both, both areas there, and it turned out pretty good, at least from what I saw.
Think the cost should show you, you know, the project, we like to give you a good estimate upfront as best that we can. It's a competitive bidding market, and I think we did a fabulous job of getting our project out for bid early this year. We also benefited, we, we coupled this project with our pavement, our mill and overlay rehab and trail projects into a larger project. And I think we also benefit from economies of scale by doing that. So, early bidding and economy of scale, check. No surprises on this, we didn't run into any hardships. Pleased with our contractor had this thing done in the middle of the summer, pretty fantastic.
Thank you, other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? Seeing none, thank you, Ryan. This is a public hearing, if any resident would like to come forward and make comment on this. Full depth pavement reconstruction project? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome. Make comment on this. Also, as noted, if you want to reserve your right to appeal this assessment, your notice has to be in writing here tonight before the close of the public hearing. Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, that motion carries. Counselors? Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution R two thousand twenty-two dash one-three-seven, a resolution adopting assessments for the two thousand twenty-two full depth pavement reconstruction project CIF twenty-two dash zero-zero-one.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras for this project. Great to see it under budget. And those are my comments. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion passes, thank you all very much. Moving ahead then to item number eight, I'd offer a motion, or I'd be looking for a motion to recess to our EDA meeting. Counselor Contreras?
I'll make a motion to recess to our EDA meeting.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, that motion passes, we are in recess. Madam President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, I call to order the November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two Economic Development Authority meeting. Item number one is the roll call, if staff can please note the roll. Item number two is the approval of the agenda. If there's, Ms. Contreras?
If I make a motion to approve our agenda tonight.
It's been a motion.
Second.
A second by Whiting, to approve the agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Next on the agenda is the consent business, and on that is the EDA minutes. Is there, Mr. Mars?
Madam President, I'll offer the consent of business, which consists of three A, the EDA minute.
Motion and a second by Lehman, to approve the consent business, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion passes five to zero. Item number four on the agenda is the general business, and four A is the contract for private development for the amphitheater. And Mr. Kurski is presenting tonight.
Good evening, Madam President and board members, first I'd like to introduce John Sullivan, who came in about a month ago as our new economic development coordinator.
Welcome.
He joined us from the Iron Range, but he'd spent many years down here before he moved back up there, so we're glad to have him back here.
Great. You're much needed on the EDA, thank you.
So, Madam President and board members, this is the amphitheater contract for private development. This will be both in the EDA and the city council. Julie Eddington from Kennedy and Graven, our TIF attorney, who drafted this agreement, is here tonight to answer any specific questions. The site in question is down in the corner here, highlighted in orange, orangish pink. This is the lot that the developer has proposed to get the TIF for, it would be a million dollars at six percent paid over. It's about fifteen years, at the eighteen years left in the TIF, depending when this comes online as a project. And this is what the site looks like, so this would be more than six hundred car parking lot. The reason why this is important is the next phases, hopefully we'll see in twenty twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four are what we're calling kind of the village, which is a row of buildings, you'll see in a second, kind of in a rendering, and a row of buildings here, and then a much larger development down below here that will use that parking lot, one of the intents was it's to make this a public parking lot so that we don't need to build additional parking in for all these users, and that the amphitheater would have rights to it when they have amphitheater events, otherwise. Right now, they're projecting forty to fifty events in the first year, maybe a maximum of sixty events. Otherwise, that lot would just be sitting there, so it was, early on, as part of kind of the design of the site, all of these uses, uses, and the larger users down here, they'd be able to access this parking lot. The actual TIF area that would pay back that note is the area outlined here, so this is the actual amphitheater site. And then there's a little private street that runs through here for these two blocks and the outlot down here. The other thing is, this is an incentive that if they, after they invest the money in the amphitheater and this parking lot, to work with Canterbury and driving the rest of this development to help pay back this note. As was mentioned in both the agreement and in the memo, the city is in first position. We currently have adequate TIF revenue coming from the rest of Canterbury, but should anything happen, this is, we're in first position for any revenue from here. And then in second position would be the developer to reimburse them up to a million dollars for this parking lot. The estimate for this parking lot, depending on the construction climate when they start, is somewhere between four and six million dollars. So, to give you an idea where that parking lot will be, and to kind of put in perspective, so this is just a massing model of what the village could look like. So, here's the amphitheater site, that parking lot, to kind of put it in perspective for you, is right there. So, it's a pretty large lot, I mean, most of our lots in downtown are under a hundred cars, so this is a, you can't see the back of it because the rendering is blocking it, but it's a fairly substantial lot that will serve this entire area as it gets built out. Happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Kurski tonight? Mr. Lehman?
Madam Chair, I had one. Mr. Kurski, where you highlighted the area of the TIF, there you go. If, if Lot Two and Outlot B do not develop, and them revenue stream is to pay for the repayment, where would the repayment come from if that didn't happen?
Madam President and board members, so the only source of repayment back to the developer, because they're going out and borrowing the money, is from the orange area, so if only the amphitheater were to develop, they'd only get it from the amphitheater. And that's, it's about a hundred thousand dollars a year repayment on a fifteen-year note at six percent. So, it's probably not likely the amphitheater would be enough to pay them back, so they'd have to wait until the rest of that develops. That's why when Ms. Eddington and I worked this out, worked it out with Canterbury and the amphitheater developer, this is kind of to drive the incentive, not to have a big public parking lot sitting there empty, but to get the rest of that development going.
Okay, so, maybe I'm confused, Madam Chair, but who's putting up the money to build the parking lot?
The developer, so, they're gonna go borrow six million dollars for the parking lot. We're going to give them a note back that says of the six million, we'll repay you a million of that for this to be a public parking lot. They're building it, they're maintaining it, if it has to be re-lined or repaved, they're responsible for, they're responsible for sweeping it and snowplowing.
And if there's not enough, if I may, Madam Chair, if there's not enough revenue because Outlot B and Lot above it don't develop, they're just gonna have to wait or, or pay the note?
Correct, yeah, they're, they'll borrow, typically, if you remember, I think from, we've done enough of these, the developer will take that note and borrow it at a discount from a bank, so they'll have to personally guarantee that note. And a good example would have been the one we did for the soils TIF out in
Southbridge.
Southbridge. So, he took that note, he, we, you all assigned it to a bank, and so he's personally on the hook if that doesn't generate enough revenue. They'll do the same thing here, or, this is a big enough project that the developer may just set that aside as an investment and hopefully get his money back.
Okay.
Okay. Sir, Mr. Mars?
And so, at the for the, in exchange for the one million dollar note that's secured by the incremental increase in the value of these, of this outlined area, which the main, number one main factor currently is the amphitheater, we end up with ownership of that parking lot as public infrastructure, right?
Madam President and board members, yes, so one of the kind of discussion points was by, this is no different than downtown, where we own a number of lots. Down there, we have to do the maintenance, we've agreed here that they're gonna figure out between Canterbury Development and Bloomington Investments, how they share in the cost of all that maintenance, but the only way we can really drive that development is Councilmember Lehman mentioned to that outlot, outlot, the Outlot B and then Lot Two, is you gotta have parking for those people, so when they go out and market to restaurants and the first thing they're gonna ask is, well, where are people gonna park? So, I think it's set up right now to really serve that entire area, I mean, it's six hundred-plus spaces. So, when the amphitheater has to use it, I know one of the questions came up, what are they gonna use for parking when the amphitheater is happening? I'm gonna bet you a lot of money that the people going to that lot on those nights will have a ticket, and they'll be assigned to this lot, and they'll be going to those restaurants and retail and bars before they go to the concert, and then they'll go there afterwards. So, people typically will not come to these kind of entertainment districts when there's nineteen thousand people coming in, unless they're going to the event.
I guess, my point is that it's public infrastructure that the city will end up owning for a one million dollar note, a five or six million dollar parking lot, that's paid back by the increment of the additional value of the TIF district, correct?
Madam President and board members, that's correct, and we put the kicker in there that we made this kind of larger area so that the amphitheater is not gonna generate enough revenue that they will have an incentive to work with Canterbury in partnership to develop the rest of that property. Because, I mean, if you look at that rendering, you can see there's a lot of potential development back here because we're leaving that lot, and they can really make this a much denser development if they didn't have, if they had to provide all the surface parking required.
My, my point, Madam Chair, is that, you know, in regard to this TIF district, that the development is paying for this, not our entire community. That's my question, or that's my statement, I guess, so, thank you.
Thank you.
President, the, somebody wanted to know what the next steps were, so, we would execute the contract for private development, they, if you remember, we went through a final plat process that has just cleared Scott County surveyors, so they will record that final plat, which creates new lots. They'll close on the Canterbury property they need to acquire, they'll close on the EDA property that we have. They still need to complete an event management plan, and then submit for their final construction drawings for the amphitheater.
Okay, thank you, is there any other questions? All right. What would the commission like to do about this?
Madam Chair, I'd, yep, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution E two thousand twenty-two dash zero-one-two for a contract for private development with Bloomington Investments LLC, redevelopment for the amphitheater for a creation of a public parking lot that will be developed and given to the EDA.
Been a motion, is there a second, Mr. Mars?
Madam Chair, or Madam President, I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve Resolution number E two thousand twenty-two dash zero-one-two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion passes five to zero. Thank you, next on the agenda is number four B, which is review of the entrepreneur program for the two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Kurski?
Good evening again, Madam Chairperson and board members. We have with us tonight actually John Moore from our consultant, he made it here through Planes, Trains and Automobiles. And after about a fourteen-hour delay getting here, he got here earlier this morning, so I let him run through this, you can ask him some questions, that we did make a, I made a mistake on his contract, it's seventy-five thousand dollars. I miscalculated by the number of months, and then twenty-three hundred dollars a month for his out-of-pocket, so.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yep, Mr. Lehman?
Was what?
Hundred dollars a month, we started out, if you remember, eighteen hundred, because both hotels and airfares have gone up. We've actually, he's been losing money on some of those, so we're trying to adjust it, it can't exceed that amount, but it's to try and cover. Mr. Moore's been really good about buying airfares way in advance and booking, in fact, he booked a hotel in Eden Prairie during the Twin Cities Summer Jam because the prices were too high here, so he's been pretty careful with our out-of-pocket expenses.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Welcome, Mr. Mars.
Thank you, Madam President. And uh Board Members, it's great to be here with you. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, my name's John Moore. As, as Mr. Kurski said, I want to tell you a little bit about entrepreneurial development, what we've been doing here um in Shakopee, uh the why, a little bit around the why, how we've done it, as well as giving you an update, including a look at twenty twenty-three uh proposal. Um, and then we're very fortunate to have five of the local entrepreneurs here tonight that wanna make a brief comment um as well and give their input. So um I'll get started first. Before I do that, I'd like to um tell you briefly about myself. Um, I'm from Greenville, South Carolina. I don't have a deep draw anymore because I did go to grad school here in Minneapolis, uh in Minnesota, um at the University of Minnesota a long time ago. Um, so I've got a lot of good connections and friends up here and enjoy um the opportunity to be back up here. But I am a native of South Carolina um and have been up here for quite a bit with my work. Um, I spent fifteen years in the corporate world with uh finance and brand marketing with larger companies, very large companies. Uh, but then in Greenville, South Carolina, where I'm from, um I was recruited by my hometown Chamber of Commerce to go work there, take a pause in my career for a year, um and help them out with some small business development things, because I'd been part of some small businesses. That one year turned into eighteen years um that just ended um three years ago. And so I worked at the Greenville Chamber for quite a while, for all that time, and also started a program I'll tell you about in just a moment as a kind of a case study for Shakopee called Next. And then currently, my company, Momentum Strategies, where I continue to do this around the country. Um, this consulting practice, uh basically, we help small and mid-sized communities to benefit from entrepreneurship. We've heard a lot about how some, how large uh communities have, the larger urban cities around the country. But there's a great opportunity for uh smaller and mid-sized communities like Shakopee to participate and to benefit. And so that's why I'm here today. And this is a list of the companies, I mean, the communities and different organizations that we've uh already helped in the first two and a half years of being in operations. But enough about me. Um, I want to just set the table briefly about the economy that we're all operating in. Everyone knows it's changing rapidly and you could argue even twenty twenty-two, even post-COVID, has continued to change very rapidly. A great fact, an example of this at the top level of the business world is that the global, global economy, the top ten largest companies in the world in two thousand, zoom forward to twenty twenty-two, only one of those ten companies is still in that top ten. There are even companies in there like Tesla and others that weren't even around in the year two thousand. So the point of that is, we see this every day with all the technology we use, but also just the changes that's happening at the largest top of the business uh cycle, but also uh the vast majority of new jobs that are created in the United States, really over the last twenty to twenty-five years, come from a very small number of small businesses that use technology to grow rapidly. Um, and so we call those high-impact companies. When we talk about entrepreneurship, there's also small business. By the way, I was recruited to the Chamber of Commerce in South Carolina to launch a small business program, not this high-growth area, but I learned about it. And there's a difference. And so the small businesses, my wife runs a small business in South Carolina. I've, I've owned a couple of small businesses myself that traded locally, very important to our economy. They keep the services flowing in the area, they keep things moving, but by trading locally, we don't grow our local economy. We need those companies that sell products and services around the country and around the world that bring those dollars back. And so what we're talking about are those companies that have the potential, they're more likely to grow rapidly than traditional small businesses. They tend to be innovation-based. Doesn't mean software or biomedical. Can be a manufacturing company, can be a auto servicing company that has some kind of innovation that allows them to grow rapidly. They sell to national, international markets, and then the ones we're helping are ones that are headquartered um in the community. So why entrepreneurship is important though is an economic development strategy in this kind of global economy that's changing so much. First and foremost, it continues to diversify the economic base. Um, it's very complimentary to our existing industry base. It's not an either-or. Uh, larger companies today are, are wanting more innovative companies around them. They're spending less internally on R and D, research and development, like they used to, and are really relying on outside companies to do more of the innovation. Today, um, one of the things that it produces in the short term is this strategy produces jobs. And I'll show you some examples of that. Um, but it produces jobs, they're high-quality, higher-paying jobs, and they're rooted in local, locally-owned companies, so they're very rooted in the community. Um, they also generate lots of new investment. They attract outside investment dollars to help them grow. They fill office and manufacturing space, as you'll hear about examples of that from the entrepreneurs today, and then, of course, they grow the local tax base. And all economic development efforts that are well-structured do those things. What this strategy is very different, and it provides a longer-term value to a community. It more than pays for itself in the short term, but the real payoff is that it creates local wealth. By, we own the companies that are, that are selling these uh products and services. So the profits, not just the wages that we pay, which are good in the tax base, but also the profits stay in the community. And that's where wealth is created longer term, where people create private foundations, start giving back and taking some of the economic burden off of the public sector by providing some private funding into education, arts, et cetera. So plenty of examples of that, both in smaller communities and, and in large. So that's why entrepreneurial development is important for the e- economy in Shakopee. I wanna give you a case study. It's a community that's different but similar in many ways. Goes back to two thousand and six, hard to believe sixteen years ago, in a region that's known pretty much a hundred percent for large manufacturing. This is my hometown in Greenville. BMW, Michelin, all these have huge facilities there and many more uh smaller manufacturing. We launched, we'd done the study to research this kind of economic development and started a small program, as you'll hear, very parallel to what we're doing here in two thousand and six. We announced it to the community. We had the mayor in attendance to help us with the announcement. We had a total of, I think, twenty or twenty-one people showed up, including the eight entrepreneurs that we were working with. But we started with eight entrepreneurs and a very simple monthly meeting to start talking to them, getting to know what their problems are, et cetera. We had an annual budget of a hundred and ten thousand dollars that basically funded two part-time staff and about less than ten thousand dollars of discretionary budget. So that was the model in two thousand and six when we were starting this up, not too, too distant a comparison to uh twenty twenty-one last year, when we were starting things here. So starting with eight entrepreneurs, we moved forward to twenty nineteen, so thirteen years later. And by the way, the reason I use that year is the last year I was running this organization and have the data. Um, but it's continued to grow through COVID and certainly afterward. But you can see in two thousand and six, when we started with eight entrepreneurs that were engaged in the community, that were there and growing their companies, in twenty nineteen, we, we were at a hundred and ten. They're active in that year, not ones we'd helped cumulatively, but were active in twenty nineteen. As a result, we didn't start with buildings, but we filled up three buildings, a hundred thousand square feet of early-stage companies. Again, in a community that twenty people showed up to get this thing started. Um, also generated a Business Week global story about the community, calling it the Silicon Valley of the South. There was a lot of pushback. We didn't want to be known as Silicon Valley of the South, but it was great promotion about what was happening there. We started an angel investor network, which are the special investors that support these kinds of companies that can't typically raise traditional lending. Uh, we launched a mentoring program with MIT, et cetera. But you can see also the annual budget by then had grown to over six hundred thousand dollars a year that funded four full-time staff and marketing budget and other things. Um, that was funded both by the city, the county, as well as the private sector through the Chamber of Commerce where we used to raise money. So that was a public, became a public-private partnership, funding it at that level. So that's just showed you the growth of that model in a community that was not known for entrepreneurship whatsoever. And I can, we can get more copies of these for you for later if you'd like to see them. But this was where we surveyed the companies and got the actual aggregated data, where we put it all together for all the companies. You can see two hundred and four new jobs were created that year, paying about uh one and a half times the county average. They attracted over fifty million dollars of capital that year, et cetera. So the left-hand side under that blue banner is more the economic output, the impact to the community. Why would the community support this? The, the information on the right is more the internal mechanics of how much we did to help those companies. So you can see as just one example, and by the way, we have these for every year. We can share them with you. They're online to show how it grew every year. But that's just the last year I put this survey together. Note at the bottom, we thank the supporters, which were the city of, of Greenville, Greenville County, the local university, which is Clemson University, as well as Furman University that sponsored it at the top. And this thing called Accelerate was basically the Chamber of Commerce. So you can see how it's a public-private group. And so this same model is a very proven approach, not just that I've done, and um that was something that Mr. Kurski and I worked with together when he was with the city of Greenville. That's how we knew each other. But it's also been proven in other communities around the country. Um, it's basically a pretty straightforward approach. Build up a, a pool of connected, engaged entrepreneurs, find them, get them out of their holes, because they're very busy people, running their companies. Get them out, get them engaged, host regular meetings to both educate them on business strategies, how to do things better, and also get them to helping each other and talking to each other and sharing their experiences. And then when they have a problem or an opportunity, they know who they can contact in the community for connections, for help, for whatever it is they need. Number four is, that provides us a way to identify the local, if you wanna call them, infrastructure gaps, not like we were seeing about roads and bridges and things like that, but more the, the economy, the things they need in this economy, capital, they need specialized facilities, et cetera. But it's a way for us to hear what those ne- needs are, what those gaps are, and then to begin working on them. Number five, sound salt, but it's very important to promote the successes, especially in a community like Greenville, a community like Shakopee where this is fairly new. It's been going on, it's just been under the surface. We need to promote the successes, which you'll hear a few of them tonight, what they're doing, so we create more of it. And then lastly is leverage that momentum to build more long-term sustainability. It's just a matter of showing the results. It's gonna be smaller at first, but just continue to build it and use that to continue building this uh momentum in the community. So that's the general recipe, if you will, for getting this done. So going back to June of twenty twenty-one, uh basically, I came up for a three, three-month engagement with the city to basically see if we could do this. It wasn't a commitment that we could. It was, let's go see if we can uncover entrepreneurs and find them, pull them together and see if they'd like to start getting together. So we found six high-impact entrepreneurs, um several of which are here tonight, and we met with each one of them one-on-one to find out about their business, what are their needs, et cetera, and would they be interested in getting together, both to not just get support, but to also be a support and help move this forward and help one another. We also met with seven economic development allies, the county, Minnesota State University, SMSC, et cetera, as well as two entrepreneur organizations in the Twin Cities, to tell them what we were doing, to kind of get their buy-in and support. And then we held an on, a pilot meeting, if you will. We did one meeting in August of twenty twenty-one, pulled them together, the first time any of them met each other, and basically said, do we wanna keep doing this? Is this, is this gonna help your companies to grow here? And it was a unanimous yes to continue. So that's the real simple, but the basic foundations of what we started with in summer of twenty twenty-one, six entrepreneurs. Today, with no real marketing expenditures to attract more, recruiting in a traditional sense, we have fourteen entrepreneurs that are now engaged, including our first two female founders, and we have one, uh you'll hear from Irene shortly. Uh, we have two female founders and we're working on more diversity in the group. We've held thirteen monthly meetings like we've talked about, and that's what, that's kind of become this nuclear core of building this group. As a result of that, we've connected them to marketing help, professionals, legal, sales, business experts that they wouldn't have found otherwise. We provided direct support to six entrepreneurs who did call for support. They needed help. They had an, an eye, you know, they didn't know who to turn to, who could we connect them with, including one company you'll hear about tonight that called needing help finding space, that had operations in several locations, not in Shakopee, and found a way to consolidate that here in the city. So you'll hear about that. And then we had, uh, you know, the one company moved their headquarter and operations to Shakopee. So that's really where we are as of today. Also, we weren't, you know, going out seeking the PR, but here's an example of a story that the word got out about what we're doing through our allies. We don't know who contacted them initially. There's a great story in City Lifestyles in the Twin Cities about what's happening here, and it talked about the city of Shakopee, and then it highlighted several of our entrepreneurs that are doing great things here. There's also a uh job board. There's a new technology that you can point at company uh job postings online. It will, what they call scrape them into one location that you can put your own brand, like the city of Shakopee, and show all the jobs that are available. Just pointing at only twenty-eight companies, there's four hundred and fifteen jobs open as of about two hours ago when I captured that picture from the internet. So that's a great example of what could be. And we're not fully leveraging that. That's just an example of what can be done to show all the job openings here. And obviously, those twenty-eight companies, including our startup companies, need help filling those jobs. And then lastly, this wasn't in the, in the core plan or proposal, but um I've been, because of my eighteen years working in chambers of commerce and, and including totally revamping a chamber and growing it, um I've been doing one-on-one meetings with Tim Zunker, the CEO of the local Chamber of Commerce. We meet every month as part of my visit, just to share best practices and let him ask me advice and what have I seen. Um, I'm currently working in Spartanburg, South Carolina, doing a very similar project to this, and their Chamber of Commerce was voted the best in the United States last year. So making those connections to Tim, so he can learn from, from other chamber executives. In fact, uh, Mr. Kurski and I are presenting a, a meeting with their board tomorrow morning, the Chamber Board here, to just give them an update on what we're working on. And the opportunity there is, is our way to engage with the chamber as well as the private sector more in what we're doing to start being more of a supporter. So looking forward, um, it's really a two-pronged approach. Um, first and foremost, continue building on this momentum. Grow the number of companies engaged to over twenty. Maybe we can get to twenty-five. You don't know until we get out there and really start being in our network, but we think we can get over twenty for sure. And look for that strategic project like capital, a new facility. We did do a grant application last year uh to the federal government. We didn't get it last year to do a facility, but that could become a, a project in the future. So find that gap that the community needs to work on in addition to providing the direct support to entrepreneurs. And then third, promote those successes. Let's, we, in fact, we have another news story that may come out end of this year, beginning of next year, in one of the business journals in the local community that we're working on getting to feature the companies and talk about what the city has been doing to make it more of a hub for entrepreneurship. But that's building on the momentum. And then the, the second part is really to build the long-term sustainability is to begin to really train and transition the operations and running of this um over to the local staff. John Sullivan and I have begun meeting and, and preparing him and diving him deeper in how this works and how you can grow this group. And then to identify potential partnerships, whether it's Chamber of Commerce or others, and private sector supporters to start providing future resources in addition to what the city has been putting in. So that's really the twenty twenty-three proposal. You have more detail, I think, in your, in your information. But now, and that's enough for me. I'm sorry to just go on and tell you that very quickly, a lot of information. Uh, but I do want to highlight several of our entrepreneurs that are here, and I'll ask you guys, if you wanna just go up to the table and give your name and um your address, your home address. This is Dan Dipmer. He's one of the original six that helped us get all this going. He's founder and CEO of Wolf Tooth Components and Atso Cycles.
Welcome, Mr. Dipmer.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Um, yeah, my name is Dan Dipmer. I'm a co-owner of Atso Cycles, which ships complete bicycles, bikes that um ride on gravel roads and also in the snow in winter. And then the other component, or other company is Wolf Tooth Components, and we make um probably ninety percent of our components actually right here in Minnesota. And we ship those products to five thousand bike shops um across the country and over three hundred distributors kind of around the world. Um, so it's really been a success story. We, the three of us that founded the company used to work together just on the, the street here at uh, at Seagate in Shakopee. This was something that was kind of a passion project. We did kind of on, on nights and weekends. Um, and it slowly blossomed into this thing where we could quit our day jobs and, and, you know, play bikes, as I say, um, you know, all day long. It's, I don't work any less hard um than I did working for Seagate, but I have, I have a lot of fun. Um, right now, we're up to, we have sixty-five um people on our staff approximately. Um, thirteen CNC mills and lathes um in our facility. We have a twenty-eight thousand square foot facility that we're pretty much bursting um at the seams um to try to keep up. Um, you know, our, our industry in general did really well during COVID because everyone was out riding their bikes. Um, and it's, you know, continued to grow. Um, I wanted to, to share on being part of this group, it wa, it was, it's been really fun um interacting with other entrepreneurs and kind of learning from their mistakes and also sharing with the other entrepreneurs mistakes that I've made over the years and kind of learn the hard way. I really wish I had a group like this and we started, you know, I think we could have gotten to where we are significantly faster. Just last week, I had a, an opportunity. I was down in Bentonville, Arkansas. It's another example of a city that kind of built this sort of uh group to attract people to the community, attract talent to the community. Um, and one of the gentlemen that I spoke with there, um, he had a good analogy that I thought really helped kind of explain what a program like this can do for the community. He described it as kind of like building a coral reef um in the sea. You have lots of fish swimming by, lots of opportunities. Um, but you have to start building that infrastructure so that these, these fish and all the things that go along with it have a, a reason to stick, you know, stick around or to congregate in this area. And once you start getting these, this infrastructure kind of put in place, this support network, you know, kind of all the things you need to build a business, um, it just starts attracting bigger and bigger fish, and all of a sudden, you have this very healthy and growing uh ecosystem where everyone's kind of helping each other. And that's really what I feel like this program um has provided.
Thank you.
Next is another one of our original um entrepreneurs, Alan Tolkus with MedThera, who's a serial entrepreneur. Has built a couple of medical device companies and has a new one he, he'll tell you about briefly now.
Um, yeah, this has been a, a really great program. I've been to a few different cities and uh the resources here are, are great. And uh, you know, I can act a lot of those things, but you know, it And uh, you know, I could act a lot of those things, but you know, it's, it's a moving, it's constantly moving and changing, as uh John indicated. Uh it's Shakopee's like booming, it seems really good. But you need to keep it that way, and these programs are so valuable. Uh meeting with uh the other entrepreneurs, Dan sums up really well too, you just learn a lot. Uh our company, uh Walkport, uh we developed a product uh called Exoskeleton Walk Station. So we're, our mission is really to help people restore their ability to walk. Uh it's very similar to a previous company we had, uh Durable Medical Equipment. Uh very small town, Morton, Minnesota, but we I sold the Invacare a while back, but we had, it's still probably about forty, fifty employees there. Uh so it's very similar, and in this company, we'll do um uh market and distribute the same way. We'll probably be in about thirty, forty countries with about three or four thousand distributors. So we're going to bring money from other areas into this area, so. So when you have amphitheaters and other things that have nice roads that you have more people to drive on, right? And using, and uh, so uh, again, I guess I, I, I just think uh you've got a good thing going here. You've got great, great people and uh it's a great program and I support it a hundred percent. I'll be continuing to support as well, so.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Lehman.
I didn't catch what the product is that you created.
I'm sorry, pardon?
What product did you create or?
Uh, we've created a product called the Walkport. And uh we are, we're just launching now, so it's, yeah, we got set back a little bit with the COVID deal, but uh we uh should be launching in January. We just kind of went through our first proto, couple prototypes, and now we're in the final stages.
Okay.
So it's a product that uh, what it does is it allows individuals who uh, our, our customer base are really spinal cord injury or Parkinson's, uh MS, stroke, anybody who's uh has sub neurological issue, they can't walk. So we have, we're really kind of creating our own market space that allows people to do gate training uh and walk therapy in their home. Uh one good thing about what COVID did is it allowed uh, kind of accelerated the telehealth uh acceptability uh through Medicare and stuff. So our product is uh, you know, pretty technical. We actually uh put in uh sensors and we're able to monitor the usage of price so we can measure outcomes and uh it will help motivate people. So the problem is people stop walking and unfortunately, that is seniors, that happens and uh your health really deteriorates fast. It's very expensive. And what we gotta do is keep people out of the nursing homes and hospitals. And you just have to move. And what our product does is full support from a stand, from a sitting to a standing position. And then it's fully supports you in the walking cycle. And it's very critical to keep the skeletal system in line. I mean, I could go, I'm getting into too much here, but uh, you know, so we're uh, I think, and it doesn't exist. So there's, you know, if somebody needs this therapy, it's just uh, they have to go to a, a hospital, which is very expensive and so.
Okay.
I'll tell you lots more about the product if you want, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
I could go on a long time.
Any questions?
Other questions or?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tolkus.
Well, great, great program, great, really great people.
Thank you.
He doesn't sanction this, but to explain, uh, Mr. Board Member, I call it the Peloton for paralysis victims, because he showed me and it, it was very moving to see it in his facility just a mile or so away from here. He actually got up and demonstrated it from his chair with no help and up and walking that he's developed, so it's just amazing, amazing technology. And again, this is his third company, I believe, that he's, however, however you count. Thank you, Alan. Our next entrepreneur is Anders Olmanson, who's a biomedical engineering specialist, um came out of the University of Minnesota and has even um recruited his father, who's a researcher at the University of Minnesota and getting ready to launch a new technology company who's starting to come to the meetings as well.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. So Anders Olmanson, CEO of Remastered Sleep. We've invented a snoring exercise water bottle. So it's really trying to take health and improving health to improve sleep versus wearing something at night. So it uses exercise while you drink, making it convenient therapy. And yeah, we've seen ninety-three percent of snores improve snoring within one month of use. And we're doing a study with Mayo Clinic in early twenty twenty-three for obstructive sleep apnea. So yeah, this program, I'm kind of one of the younger entrepreneurs of this group. Um so it's really valuable, having the education, just, you know, pretty much the saying is you're, you're learning how to build a plane while you're also flying it, you know, it's very true. So having opportunities to learn from people that have more experience, you know, launching companies or different pitfalls to avoid, as Dan mentioned, you know, it's been really valuable to me. Um I'm, we're actually based in Eagan. Uh we expect to grow out of our operations the next year or two. Having programs like this, you know, really makes Shakopee, you know, an attractive place. And, and definitely, I wouldn't say we wouldn't have thought of Shakopee in the past, but now it's definitely on our radar, you know, something, a, a community that's, supports entrepreneurship, so. Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Next, we have Irene Waldrich, who's a Shakopee resident and building her, I think, second company, Eva Medtech.
Hello.
Welcome.
Um, I've been living in Shakopee since nineteen seventy-four, okay? And I love Shakopee. Um, I have twenty-seven years of experience. I'm an inventor, a woman entrepreneur, CEO, and uh I'm the founder of two medical companies. The first medical company, I developed a product to treat lymphedema. And I developed that product on my kitchen table in Shakopee. And that company went on the NASDAQ and is worth, before COVID, uh one point two billion dollars. And I'm a self-taught engineer and I did uh, started out, like I said, on my kitchen table. I didn't have a lot of support, except for my husband and my family and some other, you know, relatives that invested in my company. So it was a lot of hard work, extremely hard as a woman. And uh, sometimes I felt like I would give up and, but I would really stick to it and I'd say, I'm going to do it no matter what, and I'd figure it out a way. And so I did, and I'm glad I did because the product, it treats lymphedema. I'm an MLD therapist and it's helping over one hundred thousand people in the United States, and I'm very proud of that. So I'm glad I stuck with it. I mean, I, not only my kitchen table, I used my garage because there was no other place to build my product. So now I have a second company, uh and it's not any easier running the second company. Uh but I'm still doing it, I should be retired, but I want to help people. And so here I am again. So I have sympathy and support for entrepreneurs because I know what it's like to do marketing, advertising, hire engineer, uh hire engineers to develop circuit boards for you and all uh, all the things that are involved. And you need a lot of support, and this is a good way for people to get, to get support. And I can off, off, offer help myself because I've been through it. So I learned that the more things that you do right, the better off you are. So the more right decisions you make is good. And you have to believe in yourself, you have to work hard, and you can never give up no matter what. It's a difficult journey, especially for a woman. But if it was easy, everybody would be doing it. I believe entrepreneurs have a need for support from mentors, which I did for fifteen years. I called him Colonel Dad, he was close to my heart. He used to tell me, no, you can't do that, yes, you should do this. And I listened to him, it was hard, but I did. We need support from family members, we need support from relatives, and we do need support from our community. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, any questions?
No, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. And we have one more, um Corey Meyer, who's Shakopee resident and as of a few months ago, he's a Shakopee business here as well.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, as uh John said, my name's Corey, um I'm co-founder of Steelhead Outdoors along with my uh co-founder Charlie Pearson. Um, we were headquartered out of the backyard in Prior Lake along with a borrowed shipping dock. Um, and as John said, we just moved into a commercial space in Shakopee and we're really, really glad to have our own space with uh semis can get into and we can accept product. Um, our uh, our company designed, developed and manufactures a modular gun safe that ships in pieces. So um you think of a traditional, very large safe, weighs five, six, seven, eight hundred pounds. Can't fit it downstairs, can't fit it in the basement, can't fit it upstairs. Our product comes in pieces, so instead of one large safe, you get six panels that you get to assemble one at a time, carry them wherever you like. Um it's been a fantastic journey for us. We started selling in twenty twenty, we've grown really consistently every year. And um I think Shakopee is a very unique place for companies such as most of the people in our peer group. We always uh, we kind of joke about being like hard tech um businesses and that when you go look up books about how to start a business, there's books about software companies and failing fast and selling stuff on Amazon without actually touching anything. But all, most of the people in our group, they're making things with their hands. They're putting people to work, both blue collar and white collar jobs. And this is kind of a cool area for that because I grew up south of here quite a ways, so there's a lot of blue collar jobs, not a lot of opportunities for, you know, college, grad school, educated jobs. And we live kind of in the place where you have the high-octane law firms from Minneapolis and you have a tremendous blue collar, highly skilled workforce all around this area. So it's a great place for companies such as ours to be and the support uh to do that is, is really crucial. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And it's hard to get entrepreneurs out, um so we appreciate very much their engagement in the program and also tonight to be here. Uh we've now gotten to fourteen entrepreneurs, including uh, in fact, a new entrepreneur that's going to be speaking and tel- talking about his journey this coming week at our regular monthly meeting on Thursday, is Chi Han Belvan, who's the, who's sold several companies, is the entrepreneur in residence at Beta Minnesota up in Minneapolis. He heard what we were doing and started coming to the meetings because he's getting a lot out of it. So we're even attracting entrepreneurs and you never know, like companies moving here, et cetera, what can come from that. So thank you to the entrepreneurs, and that's my comment.
Thank you, thank you very much um for the presentation and, and thank you, everyone that has um come tonight and spoken, spoke to our, our commission. Mr. Lehman?
I have a question, John Moore, is it?
Yes, sir.
Question I had is in a lot of your slides, it, it talks about the various county participations and um, you know, we have, or you have the city and the chamber participation. Do you have the county's participation?
We've met with the county numerous times. We're even going to the county's um office kind of co-working space. They've built the technology center tomorrow morning. We're going over to get an update, give them an update. So yes, that, we're talking about that, we're going to give them an update, kind of like we're doing tonight with you, where we are, find out where they are and what they're wanting to do. But they're very supportive of it, we have not kind of gone down to what does that look like? But we're having those discussions, yes.
All right.
Yeah, I, I attended um the last CDA meeting and they provided an update on their strategic plan and, and they did comment on the work that we're doing here in Shakopee and that it is a good, good uh collaboration that you're having going forward.
If, if I could say, Madam President and Board Members, um several of our entrepreneurs that were here are, if you note in their name, it said fast-track winners. That's the county's fast-track program, so it's very complimentary. That way, this, this community isn't having to do that kind of work, right? So it's very kind of pieces of a pipeline, if you will, very complimentary.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions? Mr. Morris?
Um, thanks, John, for your update. And yeah, absolutely to have, you know, the infancy of innovation is very difficult, right? And it's tough to get started. And it's tough to get going, and it's tough to build endurance. I find this, this is actually, has the, the innovation built right into it. And to, to see that we have two Scott County fast-track winners, you know, it's not like you're in a contest for a year or nine months at the county and you, you win the fast-track and then, hey, thanks a lot and see ya, and I'm going to be a billionaire tomorrow. Doesn't work that way. I feel like this is a logical next step here, and especially with the group support. Um, uh, innovation starts when we start talking and discovering and learning. So um, I, I think this is great.
Is there any other, uh, Ms. Contreras?
Thank you. Um, just wanted to say I really like this program. I uh did attend a couple of meetings way at the beginning. Um and I do, I just love the components, like um, Mr. Morris was saying, that, you know, it's, it's the mentorship, the ones who have already done it are there to continue to support or, you know, just, just different, different components. So for me, and I've seen, I mean, just to see that the companies are coming back to Shakopee. And we've invested and, and in a way, it's like a repayment, we're here for Shakopee back again. So to me, that's, that's awesome. So thank you, thank you for believing in, we believe in you and you believe in us, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Follow-up, I mean. These real, these are real stories with real people, with real products. And I, I just love that touch when each of you spoke about the passion of what you do. And just to draw just a different parallel, I know we started a program at the Community Center for Swimming and we offered a little bit, and then after a year, those folks came forward that weren't swimmers before. And you hear their story about how they've progressed in that with a little help. And I thought, unbelievable. That was a touching thing when we saw that presentation. And then here with John Moore and what he's doing with the Entrepreneur Program, and now we're a year into it, to hear and touch those stories is awesome, thank you.
And Madam President, Board Members, I think the thing that's really helping is we had a meeting today with Tim Zunker and we're meeting with their board tomorrow that when you saw that slide with the number of companies and the number of jobs open, I mean, that's not only a crisis here, but it's a crisis nationwide. He actually said, we need to start having that as a community discussion and solving that problem so Shakopee becomes kind of the leader in solving that workforce problem. So not, not knocking the chamber, but it was surprising to hear them understand it's a really, it's we're entering a crisis phase. So I was excited to hear that they're going to make that one of their top um goals for next year to help work with us.
Okay, great, I, Mr. White.
Mr. Kurski, in, in most cities, uh, a program like this, wouldn't that be through a chamber? Uh started through a Chamber of Commerce or in partnership with a Chamber?
Uh, Madam President, Board Members, sometimes, some cities do it. Um in Greenville, the city kicked in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty nineteen and the county kicked in two hundred and fifty out of that six hundred. So it was really a city-county program with four full-time staff and a hundred thousand square feet of building. And we're kind of at that infancy stage. And I think our goal is this year too, in twenty twenty-three, to help Mr. Sullivan get his entrepreneur skills up a little um and work with John. And, you know, we talked with Tim today, you know, they have a foundation of the Chamber. It's a very tiny little piece, but we talked about how we can grow that. We actually talked about um, you know, one of the things we've heard from these entrepreneurs and others that are interested in coming here is you really got no space where we can, you know, the whole innovation hub issue. And so I said to Tim today, one of the things the Chamber needs to do is get a hundred and fifty percent on board and, and go with us to Washington and get that funded. And he said, uh, let's bring it up to the board tomorrow and get a commitment out of it.
If I can continue, uh, when we first discussed this, uh, was it twenty twenty-one, on June, I think you mentioned, we talked about the Innovation Center and that this was going to be kind of a catalyst to, to build on to our, our program with, at the Innovation Center and, and uh, and I'm glad to see that you've kind of targeted some industries, that high-impact type industry rather than the small business. At least that's a target to me. And currently, I think we spent twenty-five grand to the Chamber for their Main Street program.
Yes, sir.
Isn't that the city's investment to the Chamber as well? All right, thanks, that's all I had.
Um, excuse me, I was gonna, I lost my train of thought, but hit on a note that I thought was really important. I can't remember what it was.
Mr. Lehman?
Madam Chair, this is really not a new concept. I'm going to go back twenty-five years ago, I was a lucky recipient of a program called Project Gate. It was a federal program, um, wanted to start a business. And it was strange the way they did it because they basically took a bunch of people that wanted to do something and uh there was more people that wanted to try to do something than there was resources. And they had uh bingo balls that came out. And if you got the number, then you got some of the resources. And basically, the resources were uh, they hooked you up with a professor at a college, helped look over your business plan, got your permission to take out identifying information, put it through a class. So now they had something to work with, a, a college class, so it helped the class. Um, and you got the education piece and the feedback to make your business model and business plan better. So this is not new, it's, it's quite refined for modern times.
No balls bouncing in the air.
It, it's, well, I mean, the, the, the target group is much different. Back then, it was the, the blue collar trades, now it's the technology. So it's changed with the times to the technology sector. And it's made it more. And it's made it more refined at the, at the lower levels because while we all know that Washington gets involved, it gets really, really complicated and expensive. So.
So, Madam um, President and Board Members, I think one of the cool things is um, you've all seen the stories about the stuffed animals that couldn't get along with the rest and they were all thrown aside. I think when we first started, that's how a lot of our entrepreneurs felt because they went to Minneapolis. They run, you know, half a dozen programs there. They'd say, well, what do you do? Well, I'm working on an app. And what do you, you know, they would go down the list and they would get, and we have one of our entrepreneurs that's developed. In mu- in, in music, you have a thing in your ear. It's called a click track. So if you're performing to a video, you know what the beat is and you can perform properly with the video. He's developed technology and software where they can get rid of that. So it's not in your ear. So he went down there and said, I have this technology. And they all kind of went, yeah, whatever, goodbye. And so that's happened to just about all our entrepreneurs. They came here and they all, it's amazing to see we have one entrepreneur's on his fourth company and he's having just as many issues. And but to hear them talk about, you know, even if you're a $10 million company or a $100,000 company, there's a lot of commonality and it's really exciting to see, you know, a guy who's manufacturing boats, talk about bikes and, you know, issues and commonality and issues with selling on Amazon. And maybe that's not a really good place. I mean, it's just been really good. And then as John mentioned, John, who's the Beta Minnesota entrepreneur in residence, so he actually is paid to help entrepreneurs in Minneapolis. He literally called up and said, look, you guys are doing something nobody in Minnesota is doing right now because it's that hard tech. And I want to get involved because I think there's a huge future in this country for making things here. So he showed up for the meetings and he's actually presenting on Thursday because he said, this is like one of the most exciting things going on. And to his credit, he's out telling everybody else in Minnesota what's happening here. So I think we're gonna get a lot more of those hard tech companies gonna go, I want to be in Shakopee. I mean, I can't tell you how exciting it was when Steelhead called up and said, hey, we're thinking of moving out of our backyard. Do you have space in Shakopee? And so they found a space. We talked to the owner of the building because he was like, oh my God, is anybody gonna buy these safes? And when he heard how many they were selling, he went, all right, we'll sign a lease and move them there. And we had another really super cool company that is in this group. They had a space. They had a signed letter of intent and somebody else came in and paid more money and they ended up not being able to come here. So one of the things we have identified as an economic development group is we need to get s- some more of the smaller space, not the 150,000 square feet, more like 20 and 30,000 square feet for these smaller companies so they can grow into it.
Okay, great. Is there any more comments or questions? Okay. Um, and I believe you need a motion tonight. Mr. Morris?
Madam Chair, I'd like to offer a, a motion for to approve the contract with momentum for, I think, as a adjusted amount for 75,000 for the year and 2,300 per month for travel housing and per diem expenses based on actual receipts.
I'll second that. There's been a motion and a second. Um, is there any other questions? Mr. Whiting?
Just some comments. Um, you know, I've had some problems with this. Uh, we've been pretty, pretty vocal about it. I think this should be a, a chamber partnership, county partnership. I don't think we should be floating the bill completely for this. I always saw this as something to drive the Innovation Center, not to drive the entrepreneurial group. Um, so uh, those are my, my concerns with it. I just want to see some more uh, goals focused at getting that uh, Innovation Center completed.
Mr. Lehman?
Madam Chair, I don't disagree with you, but I think this is very early in the, in the stages and as it progresses, hopefully it's very successful. But as it progresses, that's when I see that this needs to break off and go its own different way. Where the city has a component, the county has a component, the chamber has a component, and you have a, a over, a larger oversight uh, that takes this, maybe it's an entrepreneur that wants to do it like Mr. Moore, that takes this on and has these resources underneath. Chamber, county, uh, city and so on. So that's kind of how I see it.
Or we just write the check now?
Oh.
Well.
Mr. Morris, did you?
I, I, you know, I think we're, success breeds success, right? Last year we were talking and we, this program was just started. It was a, a concept and what can we do with it? Here's a year later and we're looking at trying to plan again for another year. Um, Scott County, how long have they been doing fast track? How much money do they have invested? Did, you know, did, did they ask for city involvement? Um, did they ask for chamber involvement? Pretty successful program over, I think it's been going on for six or seven years. But um, I think you'll find that if this is, continues to be successful as I've seen after a year, um, you'll want, the, the county might want to be involved. The chamber will want to be involved. And then that's when we can take a slight step back. What did we spend last year compared to this for some of our results that we had for one year? I, I think uh, I think that helps. That's how I look at it.
Do any other comments or questions? I, I do recall um, the very early conversations that we had on this program and, and really it was to bring entrepreneurs here to fill up the spaces that we had in Shakopee. Um, and, and I, and then we're starting to see that happen. Um, so I think that's the direction that we were going with. And, and yeah, it being tied to the Innovation Center and getting that Innovation Center um, is gonna be a great thing to have happen in, in Shakopee. Um, okay. Is there any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Um, next on the agenda is the proposal to create a CIC condo at River City Center. Mr. Kurski?
Good evening again, um, Madam President and Board Members. So this is creating a um, CIC, which is basically a condo at River City Center. Um, so this is the site. As you can see it today, one of the things our attorneys have pointed out that are working on this, um, there are several parcels here that do not belong to this site. And so one of the things we have to do is this corner here and this piece here need to come in to make one lot. So we would necessarily um, have to do a new plat of this property to create one parcel with the building sitting on it. The other thing we found out is that all of the equipment and mechanical and chases for the retail commercial run up through the building and they're on the roof. So as part of the CIC, um, we'll be delineating those particular quarters in the building so that they're under the first floor's control and not um, the CDAs. So the next steps on this process, and this is, was brought up by the CDA, they would like to separate these. So there's much clearer lines. Um, because right now there's a multiple leases on the property. Those would all be extinguished and they would be in agreement with Helmut and Johnson. The CDA would pay for half of the payment. We would pay for half. We'd clean up the title with a new plat. They would complete the um, CIC documents, record the plat in the CIC. So the EDA would own all of the underlying lot and the first floor of the residential would own, be owned by the CDA with exceptions for the penetrations for the mechanical equipment.
Okay. Is there any questions? Mr. Lehman?
The replating and the properties on the ends going into the new plat and who owns the land?
Um, that's a really good question, um, Mr. Board Members. So the issue is, so I believe actually the city, so the EDA owns this parcel and the sliver over here. The city of Shakopee owns this piece here. And then this piece is um, abandoned city of Shakopee right away. So where our sign sits in that, what we want to do is get that out of right away and put that onto this parcel because this is actually the entrance to the parking garage down below. So as often happens, you can see all these parcels along um, the county highway and the bridge. Um, when MinDOT does this or even Scott County has done it, they don't clean up the title or the parcels. They just leave them the way they are. So for instance, parts of the park are actually in former MinDOT right away. Um, and so our attorney is advised, if you really want this to work, this parcel will need to be turned over to the city and this will need to be carved out from city right away and made into one new parcel.
Interesting. Mr. Lehman?
Madam Chair, the question is the totality of the new plat, not just the two ends.
Yep.
Who owns the totality?
So the actual dirt will be owned by the EDA as, as it does own today. So the EDA, I can't click on this, but when you do the parking lot and that one little sliver show up as property of the EDA, the little green strip over here shows up as city. And then this isn't owned by anyone. It's right away.
Okay. And then the 50/50 cost sharing is for what?
To create the actual cleanup of this document, create the new plat and then do the actual condominium documents, if you want to call it that. So there'll be one um, tenant in common piece that'll be owned by the EDA with our first floor condominium sitting on it, if you want to call it that. The whole upper part of the rest of the building will be one other condominium that'll have all the residential units. And then there'll be dedicated pieces that run up through the building up to our mechanical units that will be owned by the EDA.
Do we have an estimate cost of this?
Um, Helmut and Johnson gave, because this is fairly complicated, said it'd be between 30 and 60,000 dollars. And so the CDAs agree to pay half of that.
Mr. Morris?
Madam President, the, the requested action is for a motion for uh, 60,000 to do the legal, all this legal beagle work, which is fine. But then you say that the CDA, whatever this expense is, is gonna cover half of it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Are we ready to make a motion? Mr. Morris?
Um, I think this does a lot of cleanup work here that, um, but I'll make a motion to approve uh, with retaining Helmut Johnson for a cost not to see, exceed 60,000 dollars for the creation of a CIC document, also clean up the property title work. And also note that the CDA has agreed to reimburse the EDA 50% of the overall cost.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Um, and next on the agenda is reports and we have none tonight. Um, and number six on the agenda is the adjournment to Tuesday, December 6th, 2022 at 7 o'clock. Mr. Morris?
Madam President, I'll offer a motion to adjourn to December 6th, 2022 at 7:00 PM for the EDA.
There's been a second by Contreras. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Um, we stand adjourned.
We will reconvene the City of, uh, City of Shakopee City Council meeting for November 15th, 2022. We just completed our EDA section of our meeting and we're moving forward to uh, 10A1, which is our monthly financial review. And Nate will present. Welcome.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Um, tonight I'll be covering the monthly financial review report through October. Um, also included is the third quarter investment report. I typically would have done that with the last monthly meeting, but I wasn't available at the time. Uh, this slide shows the general fund through October, so 83% through the year. Uh, so we'd expect to be at about 83% of our budget revenues and expenditures. Uh, on the revenue side, the items that are positive or negative, um, 10%, uh, include tax revenue, uh, which will remain flat until we receive the second half tax settlement at the start of December. Uh, special assessments include delinquent garbage bills, uh, which were um, uh, recent assessments. Um, we show them as negative until they're collected through the assessment process. Uh, licenses and permit revenue, uh, has also surpassed the full year budget, uh, as a result of uh, the influx in building permit revenues. Uh, it's actually nearly twice the full year budget. Uh, intergovernmental revenue, uh, also has surpassed the full year budget, uh, primarily as a result of uh, the Minnesota State Aid Maintenance Funds, which is our portion of the statewide gas tax. Uh, and then miscellaneous is currently ahead, uh, mainly as a result of investment earnings. Um, but doesn't include our required year-end adjustment of market value, uh, which is pretty significant this year as uh, investment rates have, has risen dramatically, um, which I'll touch on uh, with some of the investment slides. Uh, on the expenditure, on the expenditure side, um, in total, uh, we're below budget target or right at budget target at 82%. Uh, planning and development, um, currently exceeding the budget target. Uh, that was a result of the Canterbury Entertainment EAW, um, which will uh, eventually be reimbursed uh, by the developer. The building inspection department, um, also exceeding the target percentage, um, primary result of uh, credit card fees associated with revenue. Uh, and then um, annual software fees. Uh, engineering is under budget targets, uh, a result of vacancies and um, time being allocated to projects. And then uh, unallocated is under, uh, as a result of the budgeted contingency funds. Uh, moving on to the recreational uh, facilities budgets, um, for the community center, um, revenues are ahead of the previous year, currently at 73% of budgeted annual revenues. Um, last council meeting, we had, we're, um, I was asked about the expenditure side. Uh, they are tracking ahead of last year. Uh, this is a result of uh, conversion of the part, of a part-time position, a full-time uh, implementation of the part-time wage study, which uh, increased the part-time wages. Uh, and operating supplies related to room rentals and then increased utilities, which would be uh, electric and gas of the community center. Um, for the Yice Arena, uh, revenues are similar to last year and currently at about 63% of budgeted annual revenues. Um, expenditures there have also seen an uptick from the previous year. This is uh, predominantly a result of uh, increased utility costs. So what electric and gas make up that, that increase there. Uh, moving on to um, the third quarter investment report, which is in your packet. Uh, this slide shows investment earnings through the third quarter, um, in comparison to the four previous years. Uh, the light blue line being 2022, uh, we're at about 586,000. Um, this is again, as of September 30th, uh, which is up about 88,000 from last year, but below the, the three prior years. Um, I do expect this line to trend upwards toward the end this, end of this year and into uh, 2023 as we've seen the rates go up pretty significantly. Uh, probably end up with about a million at the end of this year. Um, and then just to provide a point of reference, um, looking at the two-year treasury yield as a September 30th, I was at 4.15%. This compares to a year ago at 0.28%. Um, so it's something that I've never seen, um, kind of in my career where I've seen rates climb as fast as they have over the past year. Um, the second um, piece that makes up um, our investment income would be um, the unrealized gain, which is uh, the market value adjustment. Um, again, as shown here on the blue line, um, with the upward shift in the interest rates, um, we're seeing a pretty significant market value adjustment. Uh, the adjustment is on paper, um, and we're only required to uh, make the adjustment as of 1231. Uh, we do uh, hold all investments till maturity. So at this point, it's again, just on paper. Um, but uh, for the year, it's at about 4.0, 4.06 million. Uh, what this will mean is uh, when this adjustment occurs at year end, um, it'll decrease our revenues, uh, as well as our cash investments, meaning where we've been at in the previous year where we've had um, available funds for one-time transfers projects, uh, that'll be reduced as a result of the adjustment at the year end. Um, I do think uh, when rates flatten out, you'll start to see uh, these, these lines invert. Uh, and then as the investments get closer and closer to um, kind of their maturities, they get closer and closer to par value. So uh, over time, you'll see this line uh, reverse and we'll, you can expect to see unrealized gains probably in the next couple of years. Uh, so with that, I'll um, stand for any questions.
Questions of staff? I guess just on this last slide, unrealized gain that we have to show this, but we hold stuff to maturity. So it's a, it's not really a loss because we hold it to par, right?
Yep, you would never, unless you sold it early, you would never actually realize the gain.
Other questions of staff? Councilor Lehman?
One other comment that I always make when this happens, as you recall. When, when you talk about investments that we hold 78 million or something like that, the average person thinks, geez, if you have all this money, why do, why do we need to charge more for something? And can you explain what this, these dollars are actually allocated for?
Um, there's a more, more, more complicated question, but uh, one thing to look at is we receive our property tax, taxes twice a year, right? So you've got a period of time where you've, you've got no money coming in. Uh, there are also funds that you've set aside for future improvements. Um, your future equipment costs. So you have, have money set aside in individual funds, all for specific purposes. So this takes account the city as a whole. So we have, you know, like you mentioned, about 78 million city as a whole. But within the general fund, which is just your operating account, I mean, you're more at 20 million. So I, it, it's a big chunk of these funds are for future capital replacement, capital investment.
Equipment fund, capital fund. Uh, Storm is not in there, is it?
Um, so this, well, Storm and Sue would all be part of, we pool all our cash together. So it's all, we've separated within the accounting structure, but it's all within our same account.
And they're dedicated for specific uses.
They call that restricted fund.
Right.
Other questions of staff? Did you have more? Okay. Other questions of staff? Okay. Nate? Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Moving ahead then. Um, ten B one, which is a resolution for a contract for private developer for the amphitheater. Michael, welcome back.
Also, this is a duplicate of what you did in the E D A. It's just required both the city council and the E D A must approve this.
We worked on it on the E D A.
Yes, sir.
And now it's here at the council. Counselor Whiting?
So should we go through it again, or should I just, uh, I'll just make a motion to approve resolution R. two thousand twenty-two dash one three nine, approving a contract for private development with Bloomington Investments LLC.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, discussion. I guess I feel like we, we're in the first position on this. Development is paying for itself in this regard, actually, and paying for the public infrastructure, actually, which we will own at the end. And, uh, actually, we will not maintain it.
I will. I had one comment, you know, with that outlot is a prime corner lot. I think that's gonna, uh, be choice and it won't be vacant long. I'm just speculating.
No. Um. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you all. All right. Let's move ahead then to ten C one, American Property and Proposed Twelfth Avenue Layout. And Steve, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, we are going to pick up where we left off from June of two thousand twenty-two here. Um, we met for about an hour in a work session to talk about access control on the east leg of Twelfth Avenue at County Road eighty-three. So that's where we're at. Um, we're gonna talk about a project that, um, I'm gonna be making a recommendation to actually have the shovel hit the dirt in the spring here. Currently, uh, the County Road eighty-three project is, uh, for the most part substantially complete. It does have some work in the spring to finish it up, um, as well as finish our, our city street on the Twelfth Avenue, uh, east leg. Of note, um, uh, the that's improvements specific to the city, uh, with that project includes, um, uh, we'll be maintaining and owning the landscape on County Road eighty-three and the intersection improvements with turn lanes at Twelfth Avenue, um, a substantial investment by the city. And one of our last pieces is to, that we will finish it up, will be the access control that I mentioned. Um, I do want to take a step back and just give a little perspective on access control. Um, it's not too unusual for the city. Um, it's actually very typical. And with this County Road eighty-three project, um, working with the county, we did substantial access control changes in that corridor. Uh, most notably, um, we, working with the county, the county actually closed the secretariat intersection on that County Road eighty-three. So, um, you know, what's good, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, right? Um, we, we work and try to do good access control for private driveways, and we also partner with MinDOT and the state to do good access control, um, on the larger functional classified roadways. Um, also, uh, just a couple other notable access control measures. Um, we, a, a big, uh, um, commercial warehouse, um, the Kin property, um, who's operating out of there, is it? Polaris was up there. Um, so that's a longstanding, big building, um, within the city. Uh, we work substantially with the county and we real, we relocated their driveway, um, notably, uh, to the north, several hundred feet. Um, their north access point is restricted partially. They did have full access. Uh, we restricted that partially and other driveways and accesses through the corridor. So substantial access modifications throughout this project in the corridor. So back in June, um, we actually met for about an hour talking about this project. Um, we discussed the issues, um, notably with safety and the many other overlapping, uh, conflicting interest points pertaining to access on Twelfth Avenue. Um, we had multiple driveway iterations and consolidation and working with the different property owners. Uh, we went through, Ryan and I did, we went through quite a few different iterations with the multiple property owners and our consultant to try to, to try to come up with a, a solution that everybody would support. Um, a lot of times that's wishful thinking. There has to be a lot of give and take from the different property owners, as well as some of our interests as well. Um, but the consensus was through this iterative process, um, from the council was we have an issue and something needs to be done to fix, um, this issue, which is a poor access control as part of our overall project. We, um, with the County Road eighty-three project, we're spending, um, including this driveway access, uh, improvement, um, upwards of five million dollars investment. So we want to do it right. We want to do it now. So after much discussion and with some, um, prompting of actually one of the property owners out here, um, with Ashley Furniture, um, they, the consensus was to, Steve, regroup. We get it that you were trying to not condemn and not acquire property, but the council directed, Steve, regroup and acquire some property to make this work. And that is what we've been doing the last six months or the last few months. Uh, we, we worked with the American property, um, to work with, uh, with, to work with their driveway as well as Ashley Furniture to, um, work up a solution with the preferred alternative that we were talking, um, at the time. So with that, um, with that said and as directed, we came up with a, with a, another iteration of a preferred option that kind of blends a lot together, um, that notably combines the American and Ashley Furniture driveways into an, into a single access point for those sites. We have negotiated with the American property owner to acquire the north portion of their property to create this com, this combined access point. The proposal is to create a new approximately two hundred and fifty-foot section of public roadway, uh, with a cul-de-sac turnaround. Why do we need a cul-de-sac turnaround? Uh, we need that to turn around our plow trucks, street sweeping, and the general public turning around on a, on a public roadway in general. We have, we have hundreds of cul-de-sacs throughout town, um, including in commercial and retail areas. So we have a lot of success. They're, they're proven, they're tried and true. Um, so at the, the last, um, work session, we discussed the goal of needing to come up with this op, with an option to balance the different competing interests. So going around the horn, um, we had some, we had a lot of discussions about the Super America in the, I'll talk, the, the top left here, um, that we are going to maintain their current access. We're going to monitor it over the coming years, and there might be, um, a time when the city needs to come and work with, um, with that property owner and actually close that access. Um, we're not going to do it right now. Um, there's a, there's a, a story that goes behind that, that we talked about last time. Uh, we plan on maintaining this full access point, um, and that, that, that's key. This full access point is where we generally need to line up the full access across, across Twelfth Avenue. Um, and this, this access point is actually for the gas station as well. And then in the, the northeast area here, working with this, um, commercial property, um, they have agreed to simply close their access in this location and relocate it here. So we've been working with the county. The county built a portion of their concrete apron here with their project, and we'll be finishing up this project, um, with the council approval in the spring. That would include completing basically the yellow and green on their property and closing this driveway. So right now, we're in an interim condition until spring on that property. Um, but we have right of entry and we have agreement from that property owner to do that work. The city would be paying for the construction of those parking lot improvements as well as the driveway. Um, so then we get to the Culver's site. Um, with the County Road eighty-three project under the, under the, uh, county's leadership, uh, we converted, um, with the cooperation of Culvers, we converted their, their access to a write-in only access. It existed as a write-in and a write-out. So, um, ideally, we would like to eliminate this access, but this is the primary access for Culvers, and, um, we're okay with the write-in. Um, it was key to eliminate that write-out access as we discussed before. Um, Culvers, uh, customers would leave this access, and then their, you know, the, the majority of the traffic is going back to County Road eighty-three, so they would exit and then do a U-turn right here. And, uh, we showed you last time some, some pretty turbulent video of, of vehicles, um, stopping there and trying to do a U-turn in a pinch point. Um, so we fixed the pinch point right now. We have, um, two lanes basically in each direction at that pinch point. So with the county's project, we fixed that pinch point, and now we need to bring it home with the access control. So with Culvers, with our proposal, um, we have to, an, uh, another problem is the Culvers secondary access that went onto the American property, um, was a quasi-frontage road, if you will, but it's just too close to Twelfth Avenue in the intersection. So, um, with our proposed improvement, we'll be closing this, if you will, um, right up, um, just south of where the existing trail is and moving that a couple hundred feet, um, down to the south part of the cul-de-sac. So we'll be impacting three or four of their parking stalls and mitigating those parking stalls in this location and then having, um, an exit lane, if you will, only. So if you come to Culvers and go through the drive-through, um, you're going to be leaving northbound here and you can take a right and exit and then come down south to the cul-de-sac and leave. Um, so for Culvers, their new access will be, um, on the southeast of their property. It will be off of a public roadway in that location, a full access for them. Um, in general, I think they're in the audience here. I think they support our proposal. Um, and then we get to the remaining two properties. Um, as, uh, we've indicated, we've been working with American. Um, we have come to a tentative agreement to, um, do what we're proposing to do. Um, likewise with, uh, Culvers, we've, um, with our proposal, we'd be impacting some of their parking. So as part of our project, we would mitigate that with the project. And their new access point and property line would be just north of their little shed they have here at the south end of the cul-de-sac. And I have another figure I'll show you, but this is where their driveway would be and this is where they would access the new public roadway. Um, and then the final property, um, on the right here would be the Ashley Furniture, Furniture Mark property. Um, our proposal is to close their full access and relocate it minimally right to the south here off of the, the new proposed cul-de-sac. I've done a lot of, uh, I've experienced and been part of and spearheaded a lot of projects with, um, access control and driveway consolidations. Um, this one has been difficult. Um, it took, uh, Ryan and myself and our, our partners out here to get here. It took about three years or so probably to, to get here. But frankly, this is probably one of the better, um, consolidation projects that I have, that I've been part of right here. Um, I'm extremely supportive and I, I strongly recommend this for, uh, improved operations and most notably, safety. So, um, beyond that, um, there will be some other minor improvements that we would include with our project. Um, notably, uh, I, I would say generally the customers for this area, if they're going to Culvers, if they're going to American, or if they're going to Ashley Furniture, um, and they get to our new intersection with the roadway here, they're generally going to see, it, it's close to about the same that you have out there today. Notably for Culvers, they're going to know how to get to Culvers. Um, for American, it's generally the same for American. And for Ashley Furniture, um, in my opinion, um, customers going to Ashley Furniture, they can see Ashley Furniture building. They know where they're going. We'll have, we can add wayfinding signs, um, just like you see at Culvers, um, you know, enter here for Culvers. Uh, we can add some wayfinding signs, but they're going to know the building is there. There's signage, there's a monument sign that exists right here. Um, they're going to make it to the building. Um, I'm confident without issues, um, to be honest with you. But, uh, I can tell you not everyone likes this plan. Um, notably, um, Ryan and I met with Ashley Furniture, uh, and, um, generally, uh, the one goal was to try to get everyone to have, build the property owners to support this. Um, but I can tell you with our meeting here, uh, earlier, that, um, Ashley Furniture does not support our proposal. In, in general, I would say the hinge point is, is they do not support closing their access point here. Um, specifically, I would say the point would be is they want to retain their, a write-in at a minimum here. But in general, they would like to not impact it. Um, but they would like to retain a write-in at their current access point. I recommend against that. Um, it's, again, if we're gonna make, if the city's gonna make this invest, investment, let's do it right. And I can, I can talk in detail of technically why we don't want to do that, what that causes with issues, um, with safety. And, uh, but in general, this is our proposed plan. We have provide, we have performed, uh, an appraisal on the, the needed north section of American, on the American property. And as indicated, we've come to a tentative agreement for, um, a purchase of this. We did, um, they were willing partners. We did not have to go into condemnation. That was, the discussion is let's go in condemnation, but, uh, we were pretty confident that we can get a friendly, uh, property acquisition, in this case for that portion, um, pending the council's approval. Um, and with your approval of both the acquisition and the general layout, um, that we were just looking at for the public roadway and cul-de-sac and the access changes, uh, we are prepared to advance the need to design and complete the project, the first part, next summer. Um, so with that, I would stand for any questions. Um, we do have some of the property owners in the audience. So I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thanks, Steve. Questions of staff? Counselor Brennan?
Part of the discussion that we had was the turn out of, right now it's at the top of the yellow, um, the yellow left-hand and and the concerns about trying to make that left-hand turn or right-hand turn, um, with traffic. And how does this design minimize, um, traffic congestion at that left-hand turn and make it easier to make that F left-hand turn or right-hand turn?
So specifically leaving our new roadway in our cul-de-sac area, just to make sure I'm focused on the right area?
I'm assuming there's, there, there's a stop sign that you're proposing?
Um, Mayor and council members, correct. This would be side street stop control, if you will. So if you're going north out of the cul-de-sac, there would be a stop sign here. So it would function basically like it does today. So, um, and it's a full access intersection today. So there's some pros and cons here. Um, before, we had, uh, a single eastbound lane and I think it was two westbound lanes. Um, now we'll have, uh, two eastbound lanes with a left turn lane, so it's gonna be a wider roadway. But what we are doing is we're eliminating a lot of the conflict points, and I, I brought some of the slides from before, so. So if you remember, we talked about in a normal intersection, there are about thirty-two conflict points. And conflict points meaning where vehicles, we can cross or intersect each other, basically a conflict, conflict point. Um, and there's also conflict points with pedestrians out, as well. But in a normal intersection, four-legged intersection like this, there's thirty-two conflict points. Now, back to, back to our intersection, we, we had overlapping intersections. We have our full access that we're proposing. We had another full access with this driveway, and then just right south here, we had another crazy little intersection. So we had thirty-two plus a portion of a thirty-two, plus another portion of a thirty-two conflict points, and they overlap, and that's the worst of the worst scenarios with an intersection, because it's very unpredictable. Um, and we showed you, we showed you video of, we just went out there and captured, uh, some video, uh, a few days be, or it was in February, actually, where a vehi, where there's a U-turning vehicle here, and then, uh, a truck is coming and actually pulled out in front of the U-turning vehicle and just causing basically chaos there. and actually pulled out in front of the U-turning vehicle and just causing basically chaos there. So, council member, to answer your question, we are eliminating at least half of the conflict points that are out there currently by access control and reducing the, the number of driveways here. So how you will navigate it, it's generally the same, but it will be, the safety will be improved substantially.
Good follow-up?
So the, this isn't a roundabout. This is more of a cul-de-sac. So at each entrance area, there's a stop sign that before you can enter into the cul-de-sac? Or do you just go like you would at a roundabout?
So Mayor and council members, this is a cul-de-sac. This is not a roundabout. So those driveways typically, most of our driveways, they have, commercial driveways anyways, they should have stop signs on them. So when you leave a commercial driveway onto a public roadway, you're supposed to stop. So a roundabout is a yield scenario. This is a cul-de-sac. This purple area in the middle, we've done this on a couple of our recent cul-de-sacs. It's not a roundabout. It's basically at-grade concrete. We, we put them in there. We, we did this design on Hench's Way, out by the new Stagecoach Roundabout, the cul-de-sac out there. We did that to control, to calm the traffic down in cul-de-sacs. We have some larger cul-de-sacs in town that it, it's somewhat of a free-for-all at times when there's a lot of traffic with the multiple driveways that come in it. So we, we, operation-wise, we want it to quasi-operate like a roundabout, but it's not a roundabout. It's, we put these arrows in here that that's the, that's where we want people to drive typically. But I can tell you that, you know, if there's a driver coming in south here and there's no other approaches or vehicles that are coming into the cul-de-sac and there's a destination of going to Ashley Furniture, they might cheat here and turn short and come around the, the concrete here. But for the most part, you're gonna see orderly people driving in this cul-de-sac. So the design of our cul-de-sac is meant to have well-defined right-of-way and calm that area down.
More?
Yeah, I do. The area of the Ashley Furniture, is there a way to, for the trucks or delivery trucks to get in and out? Is that a ti- a large enough turn?
There is. So with every project, when we change access and on basically every development project, we have the design engineer run what we call vehicle turning movements. So in there, on the right diagram over here, they have a, a loading dock that isn't used all the time, but it is still used and we want to ensure we preserve that. But there's a big area in here that trucks can turn around. We've run turning movements. And if there's a pinch point here, when we get into final design, we can, with our current design, there is some room where we could expand their turnaround and loading dock area to, to help with those turning movements. So we're pretty confident that we're preserving that loading dock area for its intended use.
Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna start at the top of coming out of this, taking a left. You've got two lanes going east that you're gonna cross, a third lane, left turn lane coming from the east, a left turn lane coming from the west and then a, another lane of a through to the west with no place to stop and hide in the middle.
Mayor and council members, we don't want vehicles to stop and hide. We want them to get a-
Almost don't, but if they keep going, they're gonna have a crash, right?
We, that, that's not meant to be a refuge for vehicles in turning movements. I'm just, I just want to be clear about it. The, the intent, vehicles, they need to get a gap in both directions and immediately get in their lane. We see the, the hot, the stop and hide maneuver. If you're at, like at one-on-one in Shenandoah when you're crossing that, that's where people are hiding and that, that gets to be dangerous. We don't want them doing that, so.
So they're gonna have to, to sit and find a gap in five lanes going one, two, three, four, five different directions? Well, I didn't count the, the driveway across the street, which could be, which would add to it.
Well, most of that action is actually happening right now.
Yeah.
Second, second thing I pointed out was when you have your exit on Culvers coming down and you have people from this cul-de-sac coming in, there's gonna be a conflict point right there and-
Yeah, if they're exiting, we'll, we'll want that, we can put a stop sign there.
I mean, we, we know that Culvers, you know, a lot of drive-through customers, they're, they're going through quite a bit, which means when they do exit, they're gonna be filling up this northbound, trying to get out and trying to get past if they're making a left, seven lanes going all different directions, which is gonna stack up quite a bit in this and create a long wait time. So anybody that wants to come in this access to come down and get into Ashley is gonna be blocked by anybody sitting right here exiting Culvers, trying, trying to get out.
The vast ninety-four, ninety-five plus percent of the time, we're not gonna have that issue. They're definitely, you know, they're definitely gotta obey drivers right-of-way in those scenarios. But I can tell you the, the current condition, like we talked about earlier with where Culvers exits, they block, they block traffic up on Twelfth Avenue. So we have to fix that. We have to. Otherwise, this project's a failure in my mind. So no matter what we do, we have to fix this short little throat here at this intersection. That's a must.
And then my final comment, Mayor.
Yes.
It seems there's space here to move this driveway over and do right-in, right-out only and take it off of here, which would lighten up the capacity in here in this.
Have a service bay right there for semis.
Pardon me?
They have a service bay right there for semis.
Right here?
No, where you were, wanted to push the inter-trucks.
Right here?
Over by on their building right there.
Yeah, I'm saying right here.
So, so Mayor and council members, we're, we're not following you, but if, if you could help me, so maybe I can help answer a question. I got a, I have a red line drawn on here.
Yep.
That would be where a right, right-in would be? Is that where you were kind of indicating?
Yeah, I was looking at moving that over to the right on my screen, so it'd be over to the east.
So, so why don't we want to allow our right-in only there? And that's why I actually put these lines on here. That's a safety issue and he- and here's why. If there's a car right leaving, going northbound and just leaving the, the new public roadway from the cul-de-sac and is sitting here and if there is a car traveling the red line and it has its right blinker on, where's that car turning?
He's going there.
You don't know for sure. If that right, if that right-in only is right here, you don't know for sure. And that's gonna be a potential accident conflict point. Because there, you, that, that person that is waiting to take a left out on the Twelfth Avenue, he just, he won't know where, he's gonna have to, he's gonna have to make sure he waits and confirms that either he indeed turns in the new public roadway or he goes by and turns in that, the right-in only. The other con against a right-in only, it's really a repetitive movement. There's an adequate movement right here. The, the blue path, it's a totally redundant path. It's not needed. The other why not would be, we, we don't want this U-turn to be happening here and mucking up our conflict points in our full access intersection. There's, there's no good reason to put that right turn lane in there or a right-in only in that location. It will cause, it will cause issues and it's a big investment to, to do things partway. You know, as a professional engineer, I do not want to sign a plans that has a right-in only there because I feel it's a safety issue. And I'm, when I signed my professional certification certificate, I'm a, a, a professional traffic operations engineer. So when I certify things, I'm saying that my proposal is the safest and the best and the most well-balanced and that wouldn't be, in my opinion.
Counselor Whiting, when I'll come back.
Thank you. And to that point, you had a few different iterations of, of this. We've talked about a couple of different plans that you put in. Yeah, all these different, you've put some time and thought into this and, and your engineering skills and gone through probably thousands and thousands of traffic scenarios. So thank you for that and, and your staff for, for doing that. These roadway and driveway consolidations are never easy and making everybody happy has got to be an extra impossible. So thank you for all the work you did and unfortunately, it doesn't sound like we've got everybody happy. And I'm not sure, I'm just surprised we, we had the opportunity to have that much property to work with. So I can see your point on closing some of those other access points. Was there any other iterations of this model that you thought could work for the space we had?
Mayor and council members, so we're, we're somewhat limited when we do property acquisition to stay within the confines. It's a tight area, to be honest with you, to get a public roadway in there and to stay on the American property. Could we acquire additional property from Ashley or from Culvers? Not really. We don't, we, we gotta preserve their loading dock area. And Culvers, we, we can't go west with it. This is the sweet spot, if you will. This is, this is a concept design here. You know, we're gonna go, we'll go into final design and fine-tune this, but it's pretty close. I can't massage this, I can massage it maybe ten or twenty feet, one way or another, plus or minus, but I can't go any further than that. I'm, I got too many pinch points and tie-down points that it just, it just won't work otherwise. This is the sweet spot.
Thank you.
Counselor Contreras?
First of all, thank you for all the work, tons of work. I, I get it. And I have tried to look at different points, yet I know we can't make everybody happy and I do apologize for that, but sometimes we have to look at the greater picture of what we're doing. And one of the, and I spoke to, to Ashley Furniture owner and I know one of the things that came to me was I'm afraid they're gonna miss us. But with that said, I know that if they do miss you, that first exit, there's a whole full entrance right up ahead. So it's, it's, I'm under, I completely understand that and I want to make that aware and I did listen, I'm listening. And my other concern was just in this cul-de-sac, well, is am I completely fully fit and turn into that access, new access without any issues, right?
Mayor and council members, as indicated, we have these cul-de-sacs throughout the city. We, we've designed this where we can get trucks to navigate through it, turn around in it, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm pretty confident in this design.
Okay. I, I just needed to see it and explained and I understand. Thank you.
Counselor Brennan?
When the final design, Counselor Lehman brought up cars queuing in, into this area and then blocking, blocking the entrances, I would like to know how many cars can queue without blocking the entrance? Because there's still movement that's, you know, people are moving out, so, you know, I, I, that's what I would like to know. How many cars can queue before they block any of the entrances?
So, so Mayor and council members, on the, on the throat, did we lose volume or is that just my hearing? Okay. Exiting, there, there will be about three or four cars that can queue up in the throat of, north of the cul-de-sac. So with the video that we saw, we saw, you know, exiting, you know, we saw exiting Culvers, there was at, at most, you know, three to four vehicles exiting at, at once there and queued up, you know, however they were queued up, south of the intersection. So, you know, that, that ebbs and flows sometimes. You can, you know, I'm not gonna sit here and say, you will only see four cars queue. I'm not gonna sit here and say, you will not see any backups in a roundabout. I'm not gonna sit here and say, you won't see, you won't, you won't see cars queue up from the County Road eighty-three and through this intersection. I'm not gonna sit here and say that because I know there's events. And like with the EVP, Emergency Vehicle Preemption System, when they come and trigger the signal on County Road eighty-three, we have those mishaps and things happen sometimes and then things back up and the queues get mucked up. But that's usually, you know, when it happens, it's not as turbulent traffic because it's, it's, everyone's at a standstill and, you know, it works itself out usually. You know, there's concerns in roundabouts, like the north, north into Chan-Hassan on the Causeway, multi-lane roundabout up there. You know, that gets backed up sometimes and then it, it works itself out. It's not perfect, but it's better than this and it works itself out. So I could model, I could, I could hire, SRF Consulting is working on this for you, or for us. I could have them model a simulation and it would show the typical cars and how they're maneuvering and where, you know, what those queues would be. But it's, it won't be compelling enough to help you make a decision. I, I would tell you that it will happen and those things will work themselves out way better than they do today and safer.
Further questions, those staff? You've worked long and hard on this and I know there's a lot of time. I watched the, the tape of our last meeting on this today and this fixes a lot of the ills and I know that everybody isn't happy, actually on every plan. Not everybody's been happy and that, but as I mentioned before, we'll mention again, this is a public safety situation in this neighborhood. You know, and this plan that I see here makes things better. And I think for the public safety and consolidation is a positive thing. But is, Steve?
I didn't, I didn't answer a question very well. Councilmember Lehman, when you were talking about how many lanes we have to navigate out here and get in a gap and, you know, turning out of our new roadway onto Twelfth Avenue, very typical in several locations that you guys drive through. Just on the other side of Twelfth Avenue, McDonald's driveways, DISC, it's the same configuration for the most part. They got five lanes. Probably the busier area town that is, that actually has, I think, one more lane than this does here would be on Veerling Drive where the QuickTrip is, where the new Taco Bell is, where the QuickTrip, Applebee's, Arby's. That is very similar to this intersection. It's actually busier. They have way more cars there than we're gonna see out here, way more. So that, that actually, you know, it's very reflective of what we're trying to do with this intersection. There, there's some bad things about that intersection, like they still, they still have the first entrance into QuickTrip is sitting right here. It's too close to the intersection and then the Taco Bell intersection is about fifty feet from Veerling. But, but it works. We, we have, you know, tried and true throughout town here, so I'm very confident in this design.
Counselor Lehman?
It just dawned on me, I'm looking at this right-in only to Culvers and the one that comes to mind is the one in Southbridge, is there a Holiday Gas Station out there? Is that what it is? Where, where if you come into Southbridge, you get in a, you get in the right turn lane and you can turn in to that little mall and then, or you can go up to the intersection and, and make a right to go to the other ones. So I'm wondering, why do we didn't put a right-in over here, right into it?
The county probably never allow that.
Probably not.
A right-in on the county road? Yeah, that's not happening. We do, we just closed Secariat.
You know, it's funny that we had the right-in that, the right-out that, that Steve Sotow and Southbridge fought for a long time by the movie theater. And then I remember actually by the, when came, the, where Quicky Trip is and the Kmart and we'd said, oh, we should have a right-in so you can just get into the interior of the lot faster and sooner. And the county said, no, because it'll- And the county said, no, because it'll all stack up and we never got it. And I'm always a person that, I know the county controls it on that situation, but they always wanna get you off a county road and get you on a city road, so, and then have the conflict there.
All right, thank you. Like I mentioned before, you've done a lot of work on this, so thank you with that. And anytime you start messing with an access point or a road for a retail business, it's a concern. It's gonna be, they're, they're gonna raise up an alarm cuz it's, could be different for them and I understand that. But the safety concerns here, I've driven this, I've been caught in some nasty traffic over there. With that, I can't see any other better option but to offer and adopt a.
I just, out of courtesy, I think one of the landowners would like to speak. This is not a public hearing and has a courtesy bill from Ashley Furniture. We'd like to move forward here. I think there's some consensus here, as there was last time. I know you've talked to several of the council members. But if you'd like to come and keep some brief comments, welcome. As one representative for the company, come forward. Thank you.
You know, one of the things I would, I would like to say is, we have several people here from the, from the.
You have to sit down.
There's a microphone, sir.
This is not a public hearing.
Please sit down and speak into the mic.
I've asked you if you could come and sit down and speak into the microphone.
They can hear you unless you're speaking in the mic.
Can I pass out some things? The drawing here is, is the drawing that shows where the accidents have been in the last five years. We've had one accident.
Please hand those out and then sit down so people can hear you. No one can hear you if you're not using the microphone.
Here, you want me to get that for you? I, I can hear them all for you. Thank you.
Please be seated and state your name and address for the record and welcome and you can pull the microphone a little closer.
I am Bill, Bill Hinks and I've been in front of the board the last time that we, we were through. And I've been looking at with my staff and other people we use at this thing since it started. And, you know, we, we, we operate a store that went into existence twenty-one years ago. I bought this land twenty-four years ago. And this, these two stores are the number one furniture stores in the whole city of Minneapolis and St. Paul. They did thirty-five million dollars in sales last year. And then these people back here are people that, that sold that merchandise. You may have dealt with some of them, but I love them all. And I'll tell you, I'm eighty-four degrees, eighty-four degrees. I'm eighty-four years old and I love what I'm doing. But this thing has been a, just a, a total disaster because that's a total disaster. And, and I, and I don't wanna say bad things about him, but, but, you know, we can't have our salespeople and our employees running through there to try to get to the store. We only had one accident in front of our driveway and we're past all the, all the real traffic. When you get to where we are, you know, we could have a right in and right out and, and then, and not ever get to that traffic. See, and what, what's trying to bring us over in there is trying to bring us into where it's going to be worse because it's gonna grow. Now, you can see, you can see that Culvers even from the main road. Before, there was some trees in there where you couldn't, now they've cleaned it all. It gets, and they told me direct, they do eight hundred cars a day and now weekends a thousand. So, how are you gonna manipulate all those people through there and, and, and let them be able to run through that, that area in the middle wherever they want to? You know, you're, you're going to have accidents, but I don't care. I would not wanna be in that. I just wanna have our road and take care of our people. And we run a lot of people through that come from everywhere, like I've told a couple of people. Here about three weeks ago, I was at Mayo and I was talking to a nurse that had just bought some, bought a bunch of furniture. And I said, well, where'd you get it? She says, I, I went to, to, to just exactly where we are, right there. That's where she bought her furniture. And she says she always goes there. We bring in traffic, so help me. You wouldn't have thirty-five million in sales, you know, if you didn't have a lot of people from all over the city. And to take that road out, that's the road everyone uses to come into those stores. And if you take that road out of there and about half of these people are not gonna have a job.
I don't believe that, sir. You have great, you have a great business. If I'm coming to your business, I'm coming to your business and I'll find a way.
I appreciate that.
I don't, I don't believe your business will suffer. We have talked several times. We're trying to better the traffic in the area. We have had how many different plans? I don't even know how many you've liked.
I, I've looked at all of them.
Right.
You know, but the thing of it is, once you get past our, our driveway, there's no problems. There are no problems going that way. So, if a person comes in and goes in our driveway and, you know, either comes in and then goes right and goes out, you know, they're gonna have to go down and turn around somewhere down there, I'm sure, but so is every car that comes out of there going down the other direction.
I think your employees and your customers will get used to the new access point.
You mean down there in, in the middle of where you're showing that thing? Is that where you think my customers are gonna come from?
I, I, I think if I'm coming to your store to buy furniture, I'm coming to your store. I actually probably wouldn't, probably, I'm a local person, I wouldn't take that to come. I would just go to your east side entrance. But I'm coming to your store to buy furniture from your employees.
Sure, sure. Well, you know where it is and you're, you're, you've been the mayor here for twenty years.
There'll be a sign there.
But are you gonna tell me too that I'm gonna, I'm gonna have forty people working in that store? You know what our taxes are every year in that store? I can't understand why a store that's nine and a half acres big can't have its own driveway when it, when it's had one accident in five years. You can't tell me that's a safety thing to, to take that thing out of there just so, so, so we can run them through that mess. You know, that's, that's, you know, I, I know you, I know this board is a lot smarter than to, than to think that in this, this group of people back here. You know, they are not going to do thirty-five million dollars last year, not if they, people can't, can't try to come through there and try and find a way. There'll be people crossing that and, and, and just going wherever. I've been in that Culvers store, you know. I go in there when I'm here too, so does everybody. That's gonna get bigger and bigger and bigger. So, I don't know what you're going to do as this other part over there. And of course, we, we've put a lot of money in that too over the years with the various summer things that are done. You know, we're, 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 we're a friend. This, this is, this is an area where I grew up. You know, I grew up in St. Paul, you know, and I just, I don't see why this board would wanna take that exit, that, that driveway out when it services everybody that comes into those stores and tries to move them over there. Boy, you're, you're gonna make me cry for crying out loud. That's, that's, that's unbelievable.
Right.
I just, I just can't believe it. I'm sitting there listening to what I, what I have over here and he's telling me how many cars are coming through there. I've been through there when you couldn't even hardly get in there, you know, and now you're gonna try to go down that, that thing. And, and then you got the hotel down there, they're gonna have to come through. And if you're gonna get that driveway blocked so we can't even get people through in that other, other thing.
Actually, on the south side, on the south side, nothing's happening with the businesses. We're just gonna reroute the traffic.
Well, I, I can't, you know, I'm, I'm very sorry, but I can't go along with that.
Thank you.
I, I just can't, you know, and I hope and pray that you, you people feel the same way. This board feels that, that, you know, that, that we need that. This is a store that's nine and a half acres, you know, of a store. And it's the number one store in the whole, in the whole state for that matter.
Yeah, the South Coast region is very strong.
And you have it. You have it all here, you know, because we've had it here for twenty-one years. We've paid taxes of, in the last, last ten years, we've paid three million dollars worth of taxes. You know, isn't that something to let us keep our own part of our, our, our business? You know, I, I just, I just have difficulty with that, folks.
I understand that.
I, I just, I just can't understand you, you making that decision and running our, our employees through there. You know, we have forty employees that all have wives and children, you know, and are earning a living in this building. Now, I, you know, I, I, I just plead with you to take, to think about what you're doing to a business. You're gonna hurt it. And, and I, I've been in this for forty-seven years. I certainly know what's gonna happen there. Even though that's never happened to me, never, no one's ever decided to take the, the, kinda like you're taking the, the, the trees, the, you're sweeping the, the, I don't, out of the way and letting it, letting it fall, you know, whatever. It's just, I, I have here, here a drawing that shows. You know, we seem to, we seem to like Culvers. You know, you've done so much for Culvers since they came here and they just keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger. So, I don't know what you're gonna do when they start, you fill in the whole thing. And most of the accidents, actually, there haven't been that many accidents by Culvers. The most of them have been in the center of the, of the main highway there, coming off Twelfth Street. So, I think in that respect, I don't even know why, why you, that you think you have to do that right now and spend the amount of money that you're gonna spend to do this without watching that for six more months and seeing what's gonna happen.
We've been watching it for a bunch of years. The, every store here, business here is of value to our community. But there's a traffic issue and we're trying to fix that and we're facing some change. And whenever faced by change, there's a period of uncertainty.
Well, well, I can only tell you, we have, we have fifty-six furniture stores in the five-state region and I don't have one of them that doesn't have two exits. So, you, and, and the main exit being taken away from that store, you know, that's just a, just a very hard thing to, to accept.
You have two accesses and taking away one, which seems to be like the convenient one if they're coming.
Well, it's the only one that people come out into. That's the one that, everybody comes in there. Even the appliance people come in there, come from where the furniture goes and they go into the appliance, you know. And then you got further, further down there, you got the, got the, the, the little store there that takes care of people that, for, for used merchandise. So, you, you know, I, I think that little section of property that, that I bought some twenty-four years ago has done a wonderful job for the city of Shakopee and I hope you feel that way too, cuz it's, it's, it's done some amazing things.
Thank you.
So, and I would like to have, have my group here just be able to walk up here and walk by.
This is not a public hearing.
Excuse me?
This is not a public hearing and so, we're just not gonna have ten, fifteen people here. We're trying to discuss this. This has been going on for three years. We've seen seven plans.
Yeah, I, I, I have them all here. I've got every plan. I've looked at every one and gone through them and there wasn't one that didn't have some damage done to us, you know. They've done lots of good things for the, lots of good things for the, for Culvers, but there hasn't been one that's, that's tried to, tried to look at our situation. Thank you, Troy. Can I have these people stand up at least? Would you guys stand up? That's our group. Almost all those people.
Thank you for being here. We're trying to make your life safer on our public, on our public streets. Thank you. You have to stand up and come, we're not gonna, all of you are not gonna come up.
Not a public hearing.
And so, please state your name and address for the record and you have to keep it very short.
Sure. My name is Brandon Hoem. Thank, thank you for your time, guys. My wife and I, we've been in Shakopee for a few years, just built a new house less than a mile from a store on Thrush Street. Two things I just wanna add in. Number one, the conversation has kinda been that if it's a little bit harder to get to the store, it's not gonna make a difference to customers. It does. I, so I'm the manager at the Ashley store. A lot of our traffic and customers and business comes from places where if it takes them five minutes or if it's a little bit harder to get there, they're gonna go to a different store first. A lot of it is convenience. That's a big thing for consumers. And if somebody's whose livelihood depends on that, that can make a, a big, big difference. Even five percent of business is huge and there's a lot of really good competitors, you know. The other thing is, from somebody who drives this every day, I don't see how this is gonna make it better. It, the Culvers traffic comes flying out. This is gonna put us right in line of them. This is gonna put us into that. And when you guys were asking him which way the traffic's gonna go on this thing, there didn't seem to be a clear answer other than they might cut across, which seems a little bit dangerous. Another thing is, getting across is the biggest, hardest part typically because there's a lot of, so on Twelfth going towards Canterbury Road is where a lot of the traffic comes from and trying to cross through. That's tough. This is gonna take, where right now, there's two places to get across and turn it into one, which is gonna back up traffic. I, I see a lot of problems with this compared to even what's now, especially after you guys widen that road now. So, thank you for your time.
You are welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, point of order here. We, this is not a public hearing. I'm sorry. We've discussed this for many years and I understand what you've said. I, I feel that in a, in a retail setting, maybe this could be a concern. Ashley is a destination place. If I wanna get furniture, I'm going to Ashley. I'm gonna go, go over there. There's not many, too many other opportunities. So, my point is, we have a professional traffic engineer on staff. We've looked at many different iterations of this. There is a traffic problem. Leaving that open, our engineer has shown that it would create more conflict points. So, with that, to start our discussion, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution R twenty-two-two dash one-three-eight authorizing the acquisition of certain property from Midway Hospitality LLC and approving the layout of the public roadway.
Yeah.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Lot of time and effort went into this. Perfect plans are a rare thing in our world today. We work through consensus. I know that our staff has done a tremendous job, obviously, by how many plans, trying to get everybody on board. I don't think we've ever had everybody on board, which is very unfortunate. But this, this project needs to move forward and we discussed it. I re-watched that tape of the meeting the last time we discussed it today. So, that's kinda how I feel. And with very due respect to Ashley Furniture, you're valued in our community just like all the other businesses. But I firmly believe, just like, we, very, we destination prove, if I wanna go buy furniture, I'm looking at Ashley Furniture. I'll find a way, go there. I buy furniture. I've bought it from your store. I've also bought it from your competitor, but I drive there. I go find it, even in a different community that I'm not familiar with, I find it. Your building's not moving. Buildings staying the same. But that, that's my comment. Others? Others? There is a motion and a second on the table. Discussion, discussion, discussion? Counselor Lehman.
I'm looking at this picture from our, and I've circled the semi truck, these and these. And I tried to put it into this. And it looks like one, maybe two would fit.
Well, they would come off the other side as well.
Well, if they're gonna go in here and down through here.
Further discussion, discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. Thank you all very much. Moving ahead, item number eleven A, which is a city. Moving ahead, item number 11A, which is the city bill list, which is in front of us. Any questions, comments on the city bill list? Seeing none, we would move forward then to 11B. Is there liaison reports? Counselor Brennan?
Yep. Spuck meeting was last week. And at that Spuck meeting, we reviewed the preliminary CIP and the budget. The Scott County Commissioner meeting was this morning and they had a public hearing on the Renaissance Festival's CUP. Last week, the CDA reviewed the project or progress on their strategic plan. And tonight I attended the Scott County Historical Museum event, which introduced Bill Mercer and staff. And of course, historical society is still committed to Shakopee Cultural Corridor and the work that's being done there. The Live, Learn and Earn Housing Committee meeting was last week. And the Live, Learn and Earn Steering Committee is having discussions on the future purpose of the organization. And I also attended the Guild Organization Ladder of Hope with Councilmember Contreras. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lehman.
Mayor, I attended the SCALE executive meeting. The topics was legislative priorities. The city's Shakopee's Riverbank Stabilization and Innovation Center are on them priorities. The teacher shortage was a topic, scheduling future meetings. And the lobbyist that the COUNT, SCALE used has moved out of state. So we're discussing, do we hire a different lobbyist? Since we have so many different groups lobbying for the same thing, do we, do we change how we do that? That's going to be a future discussion. And then the 169 corridor coalition, topics at the executive board were officers. That'll be in spring of '23. So they took the current slate and just extended it until that main spring meeting of the full membership. And they're going to try to get more from the northern portion and the southern portion to get involved since a lot of the projects are now moving out. A lot of ours are done. Scott County is not going to administrate as much for the 169 corridor because they feel like a lot of their county projects are either done or being done. And I pointed out that the main issue that is still the issue is the river crossing capacity. And the question is, do we not focus on 169 river crossing and focus on the future 41 crossing, which is slated for, I think it's 2040, right? Okay, which means that's a 20-year roughly. So any growth we have is going to make the 169 crossing capacity issue more. And I was quick to point out to the county that both of them issues are in Scott County. Whether it's 169 current, 169, or the future 41 river crossing, which is slated at the 41 and 169 as an entrance point. So we also discussed future meetings, timelines and stuff, so that's, that's my report.
Well, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Whiting?
Nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Counselor Contras?
Thank you, Mayor. No liaisons, but I did attend the grand opening of the Arzon Apartments and the Guild Ladder, the Guild Ladder of Hope, another, with the chamber. Thank you.
For my mayor report, I also have no liaison report. And then we would move forward to the administration report. Mr. Reynolds?
Excuse me. The only thing I have is to remind everybody that evals for me are due Friday. So then we can compile those and then have them available for discussion at the next meeting.
Okay. Moving ahead then to number 12, other business. Any other business before this council?
Mr. Mayor, just so clear, I know, but the updated agenda does have under other business about continuing the meeting till tomorrow for the canvassing. I just, I talked to the city clerk. I just want to make sure you put that on the agenda because when you continue a meeting, you can only talk about something that was on the agenda. So that's why that's listed on the updated agenda that's online.
Yep. There was an updated agenda. Yeah, they didn't see it. There's an updated agenda on, on front of you for tomorrow that I placed on, on your desks today for tomorrow night. County has assured me that the canvas reports will be ready. So we just needed to make sure that we discussed it for tomorrow.
And we've given proper notice ahead of this, correct?
Yes.
So, and we're adjourning directly to tomorrow night?
Yep.
It's bells and suspenders. I just wanted to make sure that it was listed in the agenda.
Okay. If there is no other business before us, Mr. Reynolds?
The only thing I would say is that we are currently in the process of figuring out exactly what we need to do for the special election that's coming up. And we do know that we will need to appoint someone until that time that we have the special election. Based upon the current timeframe that we need to have a polling place open for voting before, I believe the earliest that we can get it done is in March. And is it March 7th?
Well.
Right to the law.
I'm going to interrupt, interrupt the administrator. So doing some research this afternoon and just trying to get all my ducks in a row for a special election. So the state already has the dates for special elections picked out for 2023. The two dates that are available, the earliest we could do is February 14th. And I've already talked to the city attorney to see if we can. The question that we are investigating are two, is twofold. Whether or not we can start the process, whether the county would be ready to be able to do a special election or help me in preparing, preparing for a special election on February 14th. That would mean that filing for candidacy would begin December 7th. And absentee would start December 30th. It's a fast turnaround, but I don't know at this current time if Mr. Lehman would actually have to take office and the position be vacant before we can start that process. And the county and Mr. Thompson are going to clarify that before we move forward. The other date would be April 11th.
April?
April 11th. Those are the only two early special election dates that we can use. That would push us back a little bit, a couple of months. So we're, we're investigating those things and trying to get our ducks in a row and seeing which one we can go with, so.
Mr. Mayor, as a counsel, the statute was changed, I don't know, five years ago, maybe not even that long ago, to specify the only dates that cities can have special elections.
Wow.
So it's a recent change and so we, there's a lot of moving, some moving parts. The good news is, you don't have primaries here. So that, that really simplifies it. So it's just a matter of, we're assuming the council wants to move forward as quickly as possible. The only question is, can we do the February date? Or do we have to do the April date?
Is a question about if the seat is really vacant and you're going to get some clarification on that. Counselor Lehman?
I'm back on exactly when we do make a motion to adjourn tonight. Are we adjourning to Wednesday?
Yes.
Not continuing this meeting?
No, it's a straight adjournment.
Yes, that's correct. Okay.
All right, so.
Excuse me, I, I, just so I'm clear, notice of tomorrow night's meeting has already been posted as a special meeting. Yes, you can just adjourn.
All right. More or less? All right. Before I take a motion to adjourn, I just want to hope and wish that the residents of Shakopee have a great Thanksgiving and be thankful for all that we have. So that's it. And I would.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. And Counselor Brennan?
I make a motion to adjourn to Wednesday, November 16th at 2022 at 6:00 p.m.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? 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 All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned at 9:38. Thank you, everybody.